Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council Legislative Agenda for September 12, 2022. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Pfister, could you please call the roll?
Can we get the mics turned on out there?
There's a part that's broken, apparently, and they can't turn them on out in the gallery right now. They're working on getting it fixed.
They can't figure out any technology to run a speaker out the door.
Is it fixed, Jeff? Are you able to turn it on out there?
No, it's going to be a hole there.
It's not playing out there.
Okay, we'll get it.
Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Council President Biggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Zepone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. And as has been our tradition since we've been back meeting in person, we have poetry at the podium. And Lisa Daly is going to be reading God's Plan.
Do I move to the mic here?
Yes, welcome.
My name is Lisa Daly, and I'm from the West Central neighborhood. I'm reading God's Pain Tonight. If God is good and all-powerful, why does he allow pain? Inside the heart of God, in the dark recesses of midnight, is a son sent to die on a cross for any. Therein lies the pain God feels that triumphs the many. My husband and I have lived in West Central for 32 years in the house that he was raised in, and I've lived in West Central most of my life. And I want you to know that we love our neighborhood, and we appreciate all of you council people. We appreciate Spokane so much. We love Spokane. And we thank you for protecting our churches and our schools and for doing a good job for Jesus.
Thanks for coming down, Lisa. All right, we have two proclamations. The first is Hispanic Heritage Month. Councilmember Kinnear is going to read that, and I believe Hansel Sanchez is here to receive it from Ujares in Action.
I... Do we want to ask them to come down?
No. Hansel, are you here or online or not?
I'm outside.
Outside? Okay. I'll go ahead and read. And I read this last year. I just wanted to add a plug for Alex, our Equity and Inclusion Person on Council. He translated this for me in Spanish, and I practiced for a week last year, just didn't have the time to do it this year. But I did read it last year in Spanish. Whereas in observance of National Hispanic Heritage Month, we celebrate the histories, cultures, and contributions of Latinx Hispanic citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, and Caribbean and Central and South America. And whereas Hispanic Americans have enriched our nation as leaders, innovators, and entrepreneurs and by serving bravely in the United States Armed Forces, and have strengthened the city of Spokane through a strong commitment to family, faith, hard work, and service. And whereas the city of Spokane encourages and promotes strong and inclusive communities that recognize and celebrate efforts to bring people together for a greater good. Now therefore, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as Hispanic Heritage Month in Spokane, and encourage the community to honor a shared spirit of self-determination, dignity, and respect for cultural heritage.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
One more call for Hansel, if you're here.
We'll make sure that this is...
Yeah, we'll get that to Hansel. All right. Thank you so much. And then I'm going to read the proclamation for September 11th Day of Service and Remembrance. Whereas on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured the worst terrorist attack on U.S. soil in the nation's history with courage and heroism. And in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country came together in a remarkable spirit of patriotism and unity, and carried out countless acts of kindness, generosity, and compassion. And whereas community organizations and family members of 9/11 victims began observing the anniversary of September 11th as a charitable service day to honor the memory of those who were lost and those who united in response to the tragedy, including first responders and volunteers. And whereas participating in service in remembrance activities on September 11th is a positive and respectful way to remember the lives of those lost, pay tribute to those who rose in service, and honor those who continue to serve our country today, including active-duty and reserve soldiers and their families, veterans and first responders. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the community members of Spokane, do hereby proclaim September 11th, 2022, as 9/11 Day of Service and Remembrance in Spokane, and encourage citizens to honor the lives of those lost through participation in community service and remembrance ceremonies on this day and throughout the year. I don't think we have anyone in particular. But that brings us to my next thing that fits well with this, and that is, as you know, we lost two beloved Spokane members a week ago, Sandy Williams and Patricia Hicks. And there's a memorial service for Sandy tomorrow afternoon at 5:00, from 5:00 to 8:00 at the Opera House. And so if you would just join me in a moment of silence to recognize them and the other people who lost their lives in that crash. All right, we are going to... I believe we're going to go to boards and commission appointments. But Madam Clerk, could you do the plan commission one separately? I'm going to abstain from that vote.
Okay.
You could do that one first.
You want to do that one first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Appointment of Christopher Britt to a four-year term on the Plan Commission to serve from September 13, 2022, to December 31, 2026.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed name? Abstentions? One? All right. Mr. Britt is appointed. Now you can do the remaining ones.
Reappoint Craig Holt to a four-year term on the Civil Service Commission to serve from January 1, 2023, to December 31, 2026. And reappointment of Lad Smith to a three-year term on the Police Ombudsman Commission to serve from September 17, 2022, to September 16, 2025.
All right. All those in favor of appointment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed name? Any abstentions? None. All right. Thanks, everyone, for your service. And again, if you're interested in serving on a city board or commission, you can go to the My Spokane website. There's a page that lists all the boards and commissions and the current vacancies, the work that each board and commission does, and also the terms of service, so you can see which terms might be coming open. And for almost all of them, you apply through the mayor's office, and the mayor nominates people to council. We interview them, and then we vote on them. So thanks for your service, everybody. And then consent agenda, I think we have one person signed up. I believe that's Teresa.
Council President. Could we also take number three separately?
Yes, we're going to take number three and number four both separately. All right. Last call for Teresa. Or if someone else signed up for consent, I can't really read it, but I think it's Teresa's signature. Okay. Well, she'll probably sign up to talk about something else tonight. If you could read the consent agenda, except items three and four, which we'll take separately.
Reports, contracts, and claims. Number one, value blanket renewal with H.R. Fowler Company, Spokane Valley, Washington, for as-needed purchases of curb and valve boxes, annual estimated cost $225,000, including tax. Number two, value blanket renewals, one of two with LJ Oil Company Incorporated, Spokane Valley, Washington, from October 1, 2022, through September 30, 2023, for purchases of A Chevron lubrication products and miscellaneous associated items as needed, annual cost not to exceed $55,000. B Ultra Low Sulfur, number two, died diesel and supporting equipment not to exceed $150,000, including tax. Items three and four will be considered separately. Item number five, value blankets with NAPA from July 1, 2022, through October 19, 2024, using Washington State contract number 12621 for the as-needed purchases of A automotive filters, $150,000. B miscellaneous automotive parts, $300,000. Six, value blanket renewals with A battery systems for purchase of automated batteries, $100,000. B Peeweg for the purchase of the tire claims chains from September 23, 2022, through September 2022, 2025, $240,000 or $80,000 per year estimated expenditure. Number seven, value blankets with A Western Systems Incorporated for the purchase of traffic signal control cabinets not to exceed $542,000. B Valmont Industries to purchase signal standards not to exceed $255,000. Eight, master value blanket with Fastenal for inventory management services, including vending machines and products put into those machines for multiple departments, $650,000. Number nine, contract with industrial inspection services, Brush Prairie, Washington, for ultrasonic thickness testing at the waste and energy facility from October 1, 2022, through September 30, 2024, estimated annual cost not to exceed $143,000, including tax. Item number 10, contract with Industrial Access Incorporated, Coming, Georgia, for needed stack repairs at the waste and energy facility during October 2022, excuse me, $90,579, including tax. A contingency amount of $36,000 will be set aside. Item number 11, Interlocal Cooperation Act Agreement with Spokane County for establishment of the Spokane County Tourism Promotion Area. Number 12, recommendations to list on the Spokane Register of Historic Places, the A Dwinell House and Fallout Shelter, 504 West 19th Avenue. B William &amp; Ina Ballard House, 2624 North Wall Street. Number 13, contract with McKinnon Street Company, LLC, for HVAC PM service at the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility from August 1, 2022, through July 31, 2023, $77,900. Number 14, contract renewal, number one of two, with Financial Consulting Solutions Doing Business as FCS Group, Redmond, Washington, for rate structure analysis of the city's water, sewer, and stormwater utility rates, $260,000. Number 15, five-year contract extension amendment with WM Recycle America, LLC, Spokane Valley, Washington, for processing and marketing recycling materials, estimated annual expenditure $2,232,000 first year, estimated annual revenue $1,315,000 first year. Number 16, interlocal agreement with Washington State Department of Transportation to reimburse DOT for construction of trail segment under the Trent Avenue Bridge, $192,144.62. Number 17, on-call consultant agreement with LSB Consulting Engineers, PLLC, for structural engineering services for 2022 to 2024, non-federal aid projects not to exceed $500,000. Number 18, acceptance of fiscal year 2021 Continuum of Care Program Award and Agreement, as well as permission to enter into sub-recipient contracts beginning August 1, 2022. Item number 19, report of the mayor pending A claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through August 26, 2022, total $10,90722.55, with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $9,931,731.89. B claims and payments of previously approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library through September 2, 2022, total $7,740,18.2, with Parks and Library claims approved by the respective boards, warrants excluding Parks and Library, total $6,943,634.28. C payroll claims of previously approved obligations through September 3, 2022, $13,630,742.35. Number 20, city council meeting minutes for August 22, August 29, and September 1, 2022.
All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda as read, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed name? Any abstentions? All right, those are passed. And then we're going to take items three and four separately. So if you could read item three.
Item number three, purchase from Bud Clary Ford, Longview, Washington, of Ford, four Ford F-150 Lightnings by Fleet Services for the Engineering Department, $198,020.78.
All right. Any council commentary on that? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed name?
Name.
Any abstentions? All right. Passes six to one. Item number four.
Number four, purchase of F-650 Crew Cab or Simpler in a 38-foot enclosed trailer or Simpler by Fleet Services for the Police Department, total estimated expenditure $192,000.
And then council? Councilmembers Zepone?
Yeah, can I make a motion to defer this for one week to September 19th to give police and fire and Fleet Services time to collaborate?
Second.
Okay. It's moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed name? Any abstentions? All right, that passes. It's deferred. And... Just checking one thing. Is there anyone that's signed up for that hearing at the end?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there's a sheet.
All right. Let me find that. Okay. All right, we're going to go just a little bit out of order, and we're going to do our hearing on 36232 at this point in time. And I'm going to invite Spencer Gardner, our planning director, to tee that up, and then we'll have some public comment. 36232. See here? See upstairs? I told him we'd be doing it right at the top agenda, but... It's Johnny Perkins here. Well, let's go on. Can you? Oh, here he comes.
Hey.
Apologize, I didn't make it down fast enough.
I like the hustle, though. That was good.
Yeah. Let me start the presentation here.
So as a reminder, this is our follow-up to the adoption of the interim zoning ordinance. So under state law, with the adoption of the interim zoning ordinance, we're required to have a hearing within 60 days. So this meets that requirement under the state law. You're all familiar with this already, so we'll try to just run through the highlights here. The interim zoning ordinance, we call the Building Opportunity and Choices for All Interim Zoning Ordinance. See if it's going to let me advance my slides here. So an idea of the general timeline, council adopted the ordinance on July 18th. In the ordinance, July 18th of 2023 was set as the end date. Again, the state statutes give us a one-year period, so that was the maximum amount of time that we really had available to us. Today is September 12th. That's noted in there as the public hearing that's required. We've had some conversations. I was at study session last week to talk about the work plan for Plan Commission. Included in that work plan is significant work around our comprehensive plan and our development code. So our goal is to get to the end of that one-year period and have permanent changes made to our development code to increase the availability and viability of different housing types in all of our neighborhoods to meet a variety of needs for all the people that live here. We will be doing the comprehensive plan work first and then the development code work, and I'll get into that a little bit later. So a few details about the interim ordinance. The first is that the major change is that it would allow duplexes and up to fourplexes on all residential lots in the city. So again, we're trying to unlock the ability to do different housing types to meet different needs across the city. It would also allow attached homes on all residential lots. We removed some constraints around that. Previously, it was... Previously, it was pretty challenging to make townhomes work because of some of the requirements that we had around covering your lot and limits on the number of homes that you could put together. So we removed some of those constraints. We're hoping to make it easier for people to build that type of housing. That one's a really important one because it's more likely to be an ownership option, and we want to try to give people opportunities to get a foothold into the housing market. Wanted to put this image up there just to give you an idea of some of the types that are, that would now be allowed. So the top left are townhomes. The top right is a duplex. You can see the two front doors. The bottom left would be a fourplex. And then the bottom right is sort of a, almost a cottage-style development, but it doesn't use our cottage code. These aren't really actual projects that are proposed or anything. We were just sort of wanting to illustrate what some of the possibilities are. And as we've been out talking to the community, we've been sharing some of these to help people understand what we're really talking about. So you can see what our outreach has been like. I think we're probably missing a couple. I know we went to the home builders, and I think we didn't note that date here. Oh, it is there. Never mind. I missed it. We do have, we've been out to developers, people in the industry. We've also been out in the community. We went to Community Assembly before this was adopted on July 7th. We've held open houses. We've held hours in the Development Services Center for people that are just walking in for permits and want to ask questions. We've been to the Spokane Low Income Housing Consortium. We've really tried to hit a broad cross-section of the community, both organizations and individual people. We've tried to get out a lot of information about this, so we've sent out emails, and we've had some engagement. As you can see on the webpage, we've had about 1,300 views on the webpage since June 1st. Our weekly community update that goes out as an email has had some click-throughs. We've had, we've posted a blog post that got some engagement. And then we've also posted videos to explain the ordinance. And then one of our open houses was actually a virtual open house, and we recorded that. So that is available on the website currently. If you have any constituents, for example, that want more information, that's one resource that you could point them to, and they can watch that, that virtual session to get more information. Just a little rundown, we, we ran a survey during our outreach to try to get an idea of who we were talking to. We're really concerned about making sure that we're getting the whole community and not just one small cross-section. So most of the people that attended the open houses heard about it through email. You can see the number up there, 50%. We actually got a pretty good range of ages, which we thought was encouraging. It wasn't just older people or younger people. It was, you know, kind of across the board. Developers and property owners are paying attention here. We've had a lot of inquiries in the Development Services Center. There's a lot of interest. People are still trying to work out how this all works. So we've been, we've been really trying to do as much education and engagement as we possibly can around this. Most of the people attending also lived in the city of Spokane, but we did have people from outside the city who attended. We've not had any permits yet, so nobody has come in to submit for a permit under this interim ordinance. But we've had five pre-development meetings that would be using these regulations. That's a total of 69 proposed units. Now, these are pre-development meetings, and so there's no guarantee that they're going to move forward with their development. So some of those units will almost certainly drop off, but it is an indication of the amount of interest that we've had so far. We had one week where all of our pre-development meetings were focused on the interim ordinance. So, and we have two more scheduled for this week. So as far as initial feedback that we've received, one of the challenging things, or I don't know if it's challenging so much as just revealing, the zoning code is only part of what governs your ability to build things on a site. So in a way, we've... So in a way, we've peeled back one layer of the onion, but there's more layers that are really impacting what people can or can't build on their site. And so the, our engineering standards and our, a lot of our standards around review outside of just the zoning code are still in effect, and those can in some cases be an impediment to housing. That's not necessarily a value statement, it's designed to be an impediment to things that could harm, you know, the public or could overwhelm our systems, and so there's a reason that we have those rules in place. But what we are seeing now is how some of those rules impact beyond just the effect of the zoning code itself. So an example of that is when you get, if you propose for three or four-unit buildings, which are now allowed, there are additional engineering requirements that developers in some cases are finding to be expensive enough that it just doesn't make sense to proceed with that type of housing. In fact, one of the pieces of feedback that we've received is that duplexes are probably where most people will end up under these regulations, even though they're allowed to do more. And again, that goes back to the other standards around our development code beyond just the zoning code itself.
Spencer, on that, how much of these building codes are locally adopted versus state-adopted? Like, what can we affect?
So the building code is a state-adopted thing.
But is there an opportunity for us to modify that at the local level?
I would have to defer to the building department. My understanding, without being an expert in that specific area, is that any amendments that we would make would effectively require us to operate our own building code, which is what the city of Seattle does. But they have a lot of resources and it's a very intensive part of their department. So I don't think there's an opportunity, but I'm not certain about that. We're still, we've had a lot of questions about parking. Our parking standards, the ones that have been on the books for a long time, are still in effect. So there have been some questions about how that applies. In the existing, so the interim ordinance did not adjust our parking standards in any way. The standards do include some flexibility, for example, to count on-street parking towards your off-street requirement. That is still in place, we haven't changed that, that's been on the books for a long time. But generally, off-street parking is going to be required of most of these units, that's at least our anticipation based on what we've seen so far. Another note that I wanted to make clear, the interim ordinance did include design standards, and we do feel like that's had a positive effect in terms of shaping the proposals that are coming forward in ways that we think are more acceptable for the neighborhoods. So those design standards were an important part of the interim ordinance, and this does give us an opportunity to hear back from the development community about, you know, potentially issues with those design standards that make it hard to build certain types of housing, but also to hear from neighborhoods about the protections that they see from the design standards. So that is part of this ordinance as well. So just lastly, I wanted to come back to what I was saying about our process to make permanent changes. Our first task is going to be revisiting our comprehensive plan. We are working right now on preparing the sort of scope of work around that. We have scheduled several Plan Commission workshops in later this month and in October to start to address some of those issues and really wrap our heads around that. There will be a full public process for that, we will be out in the public talking about our comprehensive plan and sharing, you know, and learning from the community about where we need to go with our housing issues. This is really setting a foundation for the development code changes that will follow. So as we are wrapping up those comprehensive plan changes, you all heard the SBO today to allocate funds for a consultant, and that consultant will help us to do some of the development code changes. And our hope is to actually simplify our development code in a lot of ways, to make it easier for developers to understand and to make it easier for us to administer. The code has been in place for a long time, and there's a lot of things that we would love to refresh during this process. So that covers, I think, everything I wanted to share in terms of what we've heard and seen so far. I'm happy to answer questions.
Any questions from counsel this time? Counselor Ringel.
I just want to say, I've been sitting in on a few of the pre-development meetings, and I look forward to sitting in on many more. And I've been excited to see how many of the pre-development meetings have been centered around, you know, some of the changes in the BOKA, and I think it's really encouraging, and I'm looking forward to seeing those moving from pre-development into permitting and then into action. The other thing I wanted to shout out is, as I've been sitting in on those meetings, I think your staff has done, and not just your staff, but the city staff in general, has done a terrific job of really championing the getting-to-yes idea. I think that when challenges are brought up from water or fire or, you know, and all reasonable objections to, hey, these things need to be updated, it's not a do-this and sorry, there's nothing we can do about it. I think your staff has done a great job of saying, okay, I think there's ways that we can do this and do that, which again was really encouraging to me considering we're in a housing crisis and we should be working on getting as many units out as possible. And I think the city, yourself, everybody has done a pretty good job in these meetings of finding a way to get to yes. My one question, I think, gets to this, which is, you know, developments take a long time, and do you think that we can adequately learn in a year what we need to learn to make these changes permanent?
Yes, I think we've already learned a lot of good lessons, and I talked about the layers of the onion. That's one thing that I think we've identified, is that we need to address, there's a lot of questions around development for three and four-unit buildings, for example, has just not been a viable option, in large part because we haven't allowed it through the zoning code. So this is opening up a lot of new questions about our engineering standards and our review process that I think our first staff, they're excited to have the opportunity to rethink some of this stuff, and it just has never come up because the zoning code was sort of the shield blocking all of those other questions from being asked. So I would say we have already received a lot of really helpful feedback, just in terms of the, as we've been going through these pre-development meetings, learning what the developers are running up against outside of the zoning code, and I think we'll continue to get that information as we proceed through the year.
I appreciate that, and one of the feedbacks I've gotten from the community, people not inside the city working with you and your department, is that you have been very open to ideas and very open to changes, what are ways that we can improve the city of Spokane? And so I believe that if you guys continue to carry that attitude forward, that we can make it happen in a year. So again, applaud you and your team, everybody working on it, I think you're doing a great job, and I'm glad you're here, so.
Thank you. I'll just correct the record, that the development, or the pre-devs are run by the Development Services Center, and that's Tammy Palmquist and her team. We work really closely with them, so just for the public out there...
Yes.
I'll happily take credit for great staff, but that's not actually my staff, and they are fantastic.
That's why I said you and your team, and then I was like, wait a minute, this might be Tammy, but, no, I appreciate it. And shout out Tammy, you're doing a great job.
Any other questions for Mr. Gardner at this point? All right, we'll let you sit down for a little bit, but please stick around.
Thank you.
So what we're going to do is, Ms. Fister's going to read the title, and then we're going to take public comment, and then we're going to have a motion to close the hearing, and then we're going to have a motion to adopt the facts, which are essentially the whereas clause from the interim ordinance that we enacted on July eighteenth. So Ms. Fister, if you could go ahead and read.
Okay. H1, Hearing on Interim Zoning Ordinance, C-36232, passed by City Council on July eighteen, 2022, concerning permitting and encouraging construction of attached homes, duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes in more residential zoning districts, encouraging construction of multifamily housing in center and corridor zoning districts, adopting a new chapter seventeen, C.400 Spokane Municipal Code, interim housing regulations adopted to implement RCW thirty-six point seventy-eight point six hundred one.
Thank you. And before we do public testimony, I had a request to go over some of the council rules for people. So one of the rules is, when you are addressing the council, please direct all the remarks to me, the council president, and please refrain from any remarks directed personally to any individual council members or any other individual. And please keep it to matters that are specifically before the council at this time for legislative testimony and, of course, open forum. We can talk about other issues that aren't on the legislative agenda but that are city-related, and I'm going to come back to that in a moment. Another rule is, when you come up to the microphone, please identify yourselves by your name and what city you live in, and if you're representing an organization, what that organization is. Also, we're focused on creating a safe space for everyone to express their opinion, so please don't use any types of expression that would interfere with that, including demonstrations, banners, signs, applause, profanity, vulgar language, or personal insults. It is okay to have a t-shirt or a hat or a button, however. And then the other thing is, most of you know we have a timer up here, you have up to three minutes. It will turn to yellow when there's one minute left, and if you end, if your three minutes is up, it'll turn red and I'll ask you to finish up. And then the other thing I just wanted to mention before we get going is, if you have the open forum, oh, here it is. So we made several adjustments today on the agenda, and I just wanted to, looking at what people signed up for, I wanted people to let you know that there's some topics that aren't going to be fair game for open forum. So one of the things that we did was, we put on the agenda for debate a potential pause in the issuing of building permits in Leita Valley and Grandview Thorpe neighborhoods. It's called a moratorium for six months in order to allow the city to recalibrate its impact fees. So that is now on our council agenda. So if you're here to talk about the lack of roads or water in Leita Creek, that's not going to be available for testimony in open forum. However, it will be available before we vote on it, and if you didn't know about it and you want to testify in that and didn't sign up about it, I don't know, do we have? Nicolette's still out there?
I'm not sure. They could come up and just...
Yeah, yeah, you can, if that's your, we want, if you came to testify about that, we just want to make sure you testify in the right section, which is going to be the moratorium. So if it's Leita Valley, Hangman Creek infrastructure, that's that. The other one is, I see a lot of people signed up to talk about sit and lie, and there is no sit-and-lie amendments or ordinance on our agenda coming up, but some people can use it interchangeably on the camping ordinance. There is a camping ordinance on our agenda for first reading, and so if that's what you want to talk about, camping downtown, camping throughout the city, you should testify at first reading of ordinances. So if you start testifying about camping in open forum, I'm going to ask you to end. So just wanted to give you fair notice on that, but sit and lie itself is totally open. So, and if you have questions about that, I'm going to direct you to Kelly Thomas over there, and she can collect any questions about that and refer that to us. So, all right, that said, I'm going to start, we have several people signed up to talk about, for this hearing, and I'm going to do names in three. Chris Shuler's going to be first, after Chris is Darren Watkins, and then it looks like Jennifer Thomas has signed up. And if you're going to be testifying, come on up to one of these seats near the front so that we can minimize the time in transit. So Chris Shuler, Darrell Watkins, and Jennifer Thomas. Welcome.
Hello. My voice isn't working yet. Mr. Brian Banks, hello, good evening. I support this...
Can you give us your name and where you're, what city?
My name is Chris Shuler, I am a citizen of Spokane. I support this ordinance about this zoning, allowing new housing, this private housing as opposed to nonprofit apartment buildings. And it's about time, you know, the new mayor, it says in the paperwork that the new mayor facilitated this, and I would like to thank her for that. This is something that the previous mayor and the previous city council should have done like twelve years ago, instead of focusing on apartment buildings for Catholic charities. They could have been doing this. And so it's about time that we start doing this, and also, we need to keep mindful of the fact that you can't take a city full of people and put in another city full of people into it. Eventually, the land's going to be gone, eventually, there's, it's just going to be too many. So we need to be mindful of not, you know, I mean, eventually, we're going to need another city, you know, somewhere that's not, and so I do support this as it is. Oh, wait, there is a part in here that's wrong. Under C1, under the HAP part, it says, it references that this is for people of color. And I'd like to point out that that's racist, it's a violation of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. It should be for people of all colors, so it shouldn't even be included in there. It should just be assumed that it's for all people, regardless of their skin color. My biological family is very large, and it has just as many African descent people as it does Caucasian people. We're just a giant mixture of all kinds of skin color, very dark and very white, like me, and so that's, the racist part where it says it's just for people of color should be removed as per the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four.
Thanks for testifying. Next is Darren Watkins, then Jennifer Thomas, and then Tom Clark.
Darren Watkins with the, I live here in the city of Spokane, and I work with the Spokane Home Builders, and may I just say, well done. One year ago, we asked you all to take part in this process, and we developed a paper that was about a half a million-dollar project that actually showed us exactly what was wrong in Spokane and how to fix it. And I want to thank you for doing just that. I ask you right now to say to yourself, what is the greatest social issue of our time today? And I would tell you and make a case for housing. It is the study by a Whitworth professor that unlike many cities, Spokane has the rare distinction of being homelessness is actually predicated by a lack of available housing. We're one of the rare cities where it's one of the key indicators, not at the other end. Climate change. We have fifty thousand more cars coming across the border every day from Idaho because they've got plenty of housing. How about equity? The number-one reason why we have such a racial disparity now in homeownership, where people of color are half as likely to own a home, is availability. The steps you take today are clearly of the most importance. I'll put a hard number on it for you. The new census figures say that we should have a hundred and fourteen thousand housing units in the city of Spokane. That's everything, right? Apartments, duplexes, homes that people buy, and yet, we have eighty-nine thousand. Remember that number when we talk about housing issues. It is a critical need right now. As realtors, we see it out there every day. We see the people who are suffering, who can't get out of an apartment, who can't get out of their parents' basement, and so, thank you. There's more to be done. We might recommend tonight, in fact, that we add more staff planning, just because this new idea that he has for pre-planning, there's not enough staff, it's currently a four-week waiting period. We also would consider using dollars, just like the plan we already had that's already used up its funds for incentivizing by giving back money to developers that build affordable housing at an eighty percent AMI. We talked about fifteen ninety money, this is a great opportunity to use that. It's a different AMI number, but it's the same principle. And I think that everything we can do, everything we can do right now will deal with the greatest social challenge of our time, and I thank you for your efforts.
Thanks for coming down, Darren. Jennifer Thomas, I don't see Jennifer, but Tom Clark is here.
He's right here.
Oh, no, sorry, Jennifer, I didn't see you. Tom's next, and then after Tom is, I believe, Teresa Simon. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, I'm Jennifer Thomas, citizen resident of Spokane, the city of Spokane, and I work for Spokane Home Builders Association. I, I just, I'm so proud of the work that Spencer and his team have done, as well as city council being willing to get behind BOKA. At Spokane Home Builders Association, when we look at housing as a whole, eight in ten families, eight out of ten families in the Spokane area right now can't afford to purchase a home. And being a single mom who purchased my home ten years ago, I am, I'm, I couldn't buy in this market right now if I had to, and that makes me sad. Every night, I have four young daughters, but what keeps me up is thinking about, how can I help more people get into more homes? How can we build more? How can we build faster? And the reality is, is that... How can we build more? How can we build faster? And the reality is, is that there's just not enough labor force right now. Supply chains are broken. COVID was tough in a lot of different ways. But this is a great solution in moving us forward. And so, thank you for getting behind it. And I know where there have been some concerns from neighborhoods and the complications of what it might look like in a neighborhood. I'm hoping that what people are starting to see is that instead of this creating barriers, it really is creating opportunity. It's doing exactly what the name says. And that's allowing for more people to potentially get into homes and become homeowners. And what I do also love is that Spencer and his team have, they really are working on that, getting to yes. So where things used to be an automatic no, and where at Spokane Home Builders, we would talk about solutions to the housing crisis, and it was like, oh, that's just not going to work. This is like, okay, like Spencer said, we removed one of the layers. We solved the zoning piece, so now we can look at all of the other things. But there are still protections in place for neighborhoods. And I think that that's the bulk of what I have. I agree, more people working in the planning department would be great, because I'm hoping that as time goes on, and more developers and investors are interested in this, that there will be more than just 69 potential units on the docket. But more people working in the department would be great. But thank you so much for your support of this.
Thanks for coming down, Jennifer. All right, next is Tom Clark, and then Teresa Simon, and then Ryan Smith.
Thank you. I'm Tom Clark with Spokane Realtors. I live in the Spokane Valley, but I do own property in the city of Spokane, so I have a stake as well. I want to commend each of you, and Spencer Gardner and his team, for the hard work that you've already done. And I just want to encourage you to keep your foot on the pedal. You know, it's really easy to think that we're making progress, and here's the solution. And we all should know that this is a big, big, big deal. It's not a one, two, three-step process. It's a multi-step process, and it's going to be a multi-year process. When we're, if you look at the numbers Darren just shared, when we're 20,000, 30,000 homes short in current inventory, how are we going to increase that with the current supply chain issues, the current availability issues, things like that? And the costs are just crazy. So, one of the concerns, you know, price and availability, I'll use the term attainability if you combine those two. So we need something we can buy, and we need something we can't afford. Obviously, it's a numbers game in that regard, I believe. And so, anything we can do, anything you can do, I would like to encourage you to do, and have the mindset of, if not this project, then where? If not this time, then when? Because it's not a matter of, are we going to get caught up with this? Are we going to be, you know, get over this hurdle and pass this challenge by just doing the same stuff we've been doing all along? And I'm sure you're aware of that. One thing that I think I see a lot is, when we're talking about new construction, because new construction is probably the most expensive than it's ever been, right? So how do you equate new construction with affordability? And that's a big challenge, especially if you think new construction is the answer. New construction is just one of the elements. A person that sells, or buys, excuse me, a $600,000 home, sells a home, don't they? Maybe a $400,000 home. And that person that buys the $400,000 home, maybe gets out of that $250,000 home, sells it, and now someone's out of an apartment. Okay? So the challenge, I think, for each and every one of us is, from a Realtor standpoint, love to sell more houses, but the bottom line is, I'd like to have more buyers succeed. I'd like to see more people succeed. Your children are going to live where when they get ready to buy a home? Pullman? They're not going to live in Spokane, not at today's prices. My kids can't afford a home at today's prices. So if it's not your kids, maybe it's your grandkids. If it's not your grandkids or your kids, maybe it's your mom and dad. What happens when they want to scale down? They can't sell their house for enough to buy something even smaller today. So this is a multi-generational thing, and it's a rising tide raises all boats type of a thing. If we can do whatever we can to encourage more housing to be built at all levels, then all levels succeed. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming down, Tom. Next is Teresa Simon, and then Ryan Smith, and then Michelle Papas.
So the last time we talked about this, and everybody came up and talked about it, and I was excited about it, it was brought to my attention by somebody near to stuff I'm working on, that the city council had a briefing in the back, and they had an agenda in the back. And the agenda was about the shelter, and they were supposed to vote, or they were supposed to talk about it. And apparently...
Teresa?
This happened, and it got missed. So I'd like you to go back and make sure it didn't get missed, and that the proper votes didn't happen. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Teresa. Ryan Smith?
Good evening. My name is Ryan Smith. I live in Sheeney, but I work here in Spokane for the Spokane Home Builders Association. My colleagues have done an excellent job tonight, sharing with you the, you know, the hard numbers of the current housing crisis in Spokane. You are all very much aware of that already. What I can offer is sort of an anecdote of a person that would benefit from this interim zoning ordinance. So as I said, I live in Sheeney, so my commute to and from work every day comes out to 38 miles round trip. So that is a lot of fossil fuels that I am personally burning five days a week. Working for the Spokane Home Builders Association, one of these days, I would like to potentially buy a home in the city of Spokane. This is a great ordinance, and I just want to say thank you for enacting it, and keep up the good work.
All right. Thanks, Ryan. All right, Michelle. Oh, Bai Feng. Michelle, if you'd like to hit star three, raise your hand electronically. Welcome to City Council, Michelle. You have up to three minutes.
Hello, council members, and thank you for your time. My name is Michelle Papas, and I am the Spokane Program Manager for Futurewise, a land policy nonprofit, and I live in the city of Spokane. Futurewise is excited to see the city of Spokane adopt these new missing middle housing zoning regulations that will increase housing options for many people in Spokane. However, addressing the supply side of our housing crisis is only one piece of the puzzle. We must continue to advocate with our partners for measures that fight gentrification of historically biopic neighborhoods, and to promote stability for tenants and longtime residents. This pilot program is just the start. Futurewise supports making these zoning changes permanent after the completion of the pilot program, along with adopting robust anti-displacement and housing stability measures. We support creating programs like rental relocation systems, and in conjunction with these zoning changes, to protect those that will be negatively impacted by potential demolition and gentrification. We want all of our communities to thrive. Thank you all for your time and for your work, and I look forward to working together on creating housing for all.
Thanks, Michelle. All right, I'm looking for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All right, so moved to second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? Okay, the hearing is closed. And then now, my understanding is, we need to adopt the findings of fact, which are essentially the whereas clauses for the ordinance we passed in July. And I'm going to ask, it seems like it's just a motion, as opposed to a roll call vote. So, any discussion about adopting those as findings of fact after hearing the testimony from our community members? All right. Well, I am just going to comment that I'm very proud of the fact that we had a seven to zero vote to adopt this interim ordinance. And as far as I know, we're once again leading in the state of Washington on restoring missing middle housing. And as I'm fond of saying, when Spokane leads, Washington follows. So I'm hoping that the next legislative session, we'll be able to export this gospel to the rest of the state, and if not there, at least other cities will follow us. Because if we can do it in Spokane, we can do it anywhere. With that, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that passes unanimously. And then let's just go back to the top of our agenda. And I believe we're in special budget ordinances.
Ordinance C36263, amending ordinance number C36161, passed by the city council, December 13, 2021, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2022, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2022, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage, and declaring an emergency in appropriating funds in real estate excise tax fund, number one, increase appropriation by $400,000. A of the increased appropriation, $400,000 is provided solely as a transfer out to the fire EMS fund for the commission of a fire facility study. And fire EMS fund, number one, increase revenue by $500,000. A $400,000 of the increased revenue is a transfer in from real estate excise tax first quarter percent. B $100,000 of the increased revenue is a transfer in from the general fund. Number two, increase appropriation by $500,000. C of the increased appropriation, $500,000 is to be used solely for the commission of a fire facility study. This action arises from the need to commission a study of current and future fire department facilities.
All right, well, pretty straightforward. It would fund a study for all the fire department facilities. We know we're staring at the need to replace a fire station on the West Plains near the airport, because we lost our lease. Leita Valley's interested. We've talked about a joint fire station with District Nine, I believe, up on Five Mile. But this would be the whole city, and really, over the next couple of decades. There is, Teresa Simon has signed up to testify. Teresa? Nope. All right. No one else? Any council commentary? All right, prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero.
Ordinance C36265, golf fund, number one, increase appropriation by $120,000. Two of the increased appropriation, $80,000 is provided solely for fuel and operating supplies. Three of the increased appropriation, $40,000 is provided solely for capital. A, this is an increase to the overall appropriation level in the golf fund. This action arises from the inflationary cost increases in supplies, fuel, and capital expenditures.
All right. Teresa, you're signed up for this. Do you want to testify? Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero.
Ordinance C36266, general fund, number one, increase appropriation by $250,000. Two of the increased appropriation, $250,000 is provided solely for election services in the non-departmental department, and shall be funded from an unappropriated general fund balance. A, this is an increase to the overall appropriation level in the general fund. This action arises from the city council's request to run an election this year.
Teresa? Nope. Okay. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right, that passes five to two.
Ordinance C36268, fleet services fund, number one, increase the appropriation for vehicles in the fleet services equipment replacement department by $360,808, which shall be funded from unappropriated fund balance. A, this is an increase to the overall appropriation level in the fleet services fund. This action arises from the need to purchase specified conforming flusher trucks.
Teresa? All right. Teresa Simon's coming on down. And welcome. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you, Teresa Simon. They're driving our vehicles all to their houses and taking them places for personal use. And I think that if they weren't doing that, we wouldn't be buying as many cars. So I vote no.
All right. Thanks for testifying. Any council commentary? Council member Cathcart?
Yeah, so I just want to make it clear. So what we were told earlier is that these dollars are from a, basically reimbursement from returning a fire vehicle. So we're not just taking $360,000 out of our unappropriated fund balance. This is money that was put in there because we had that reimbursement. So I just want to make that clear, and I am supporting.
Anyone else? All right, prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero.
Ordinance 36269, general fund, number one, decrease the appropriation for a principal planner position in the planning services department by $50,000. Two, decrease the appropriation for assistant planner two positions in the planning services department by $95,000. Three, decrease the appropriation for an assistant planner one position in the planning services department by $25,000. Four, increase the appropriation for contractual services by $170,000. A, there is no change to the overall appropriation level in the general fund. This action arises from comprehensive plan and development code changes resulting from the pilot zoning ordinance C36232.
Teresa? All right. No further public commentary. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. And we're at resolutions and final reading ordinances.
Did you want to do the emergency ordinance first? 36276?
No. Well, yeah.
Okay, this one I'll read in its entirety, and it's a little bit long, so bear with me. Ordinance number C36276, an ordinance imposing an immediate moratorium regarding building permit applications for residential structures in the Leita-Hangman and Grandview-Thorpe neighborhoods, setting a public hearing and declared an emergency. Whereas there has been a significant increase in residential development in the Leita-Hangman and Grandview-Thorpe neighborhoods in recent years, and whereas, based on comments received from the Washington State Department of Transportation, WASDOT, new subdivisions in the area have been required to make various improvements to US 195 and other roadways as a condition of approval. And whereas, despite the conditions that have been placed on new subdivisions, WASDOT continues to express concern about impacts to US 195, and has asked the city to impose a temporary development moratorium in the area while it works with the city to identify solutions for providing the facilities needed to serve new growth and development in the area. And whereas, the city has identified several transportation projects that are needed in order to serve the increased growth and development occurring and anticipated in the Leita-Hangman and Grandview-Thorpe neighborhoods. And whereas, pursuant to RCW 82.02.050 et cetera, in chapter 17D.075 of the Spokane municipal code, SMC, the city collects transportation impact fees on new development within the city hereafter transportation impact fees. And whereas, by enacting RCW 82.02.050 et cetera, the legislature intended to enable cities to plan for new growth and development, and to recoup from developers a predictable share of the infrastructure costs attributable to anticipated growth. Spokane County versus Eastern Washington Growth Management Hearings Board, 173WN App 310, 2013, and further intended that impact fees are to be a proportionate share of the costs of system improvements, including roads and other public infrastructure, identified in the city's capital facilities plans, that are reasonably related to and reasonably benefit the development. City of Olympia versus Durbik, 156WN, second, 2890, 2006. And whereas, transportation impact fees do not vest during the planning process, Pavilina versus City of Vancouver, 122WN, App 520, 2004, but are instead assessed pursuant to SMC 17D.075.04C prior to the issuance of building permits, although collection may be deferred until the end of construction pursuant to Spokane municipal code 17D.075.04C. And whereas, pursuant to chapter 13.03, SMC, Article 8, the city imposes a wastewater general facilities charge, GFC, for new connections to the city's wastewater system, the purpose of which is to defray costs created by new system demand, such as costs of providing increased system capacity for new development. And whereas, pursuant to chapter 13.04, SMC, Article 8, the city imposes a water general facilities charge, GFC for new connections to the city's water system, the purpose of which is to defray costs created by new system demand, such as costs of providing increased system capacity for new development. And whereas, wastewater and water GFSs are collected at the time of connection, which usually occurs after a building permit has been issued. And whereas, the city finds that under the present transportation impact fee schedules in chapter 17D.075, SMC, the impact fees that are being collected for new residential construction and development occurring in these neighborhoods are not adequate to cover the development's proportionate share of the cost of new system improvements that are reasonably related to and will reasonably benefit the new development. And whereas, the city finds that under the city's current fee schedules for wastewater and water GFCs and fees that are collected are inadequate to cover the cost of providing the additional system capacity needed to serve the residential development occurring and anticipated with system capacity needed to serve the residential development occurring and anticipated within the Leita, Hangman, and Grandview Thorpe neighborhoods. And whereas the city finds that it is necessary to update the transportation impact fees and general facilities charges are such similar charges as the city has authorized to collect, it assesses and collects in the Leita, Hangman, and Grandview Thorpe neighborhoods so that the fees are adequate to cover the cost of system improvements that are reasonably related to new growth and development occurring and anticipated in these neighborhoods. Two, do not exceed a proportionate share of the cost of system improvements that are reasonably related to the new development. And three, will be used for system improvements that will reasonably benefit the new development. And whereas the city finds that a moratorium on residential building permit applications in these neighborhoods is necessary in order to give the city time to update its transportation impact fee schedules and general facilities charges schedules accordingly. And whereas RCW 36.78.390 provides a county or city governing board that adopts a moratorium interim zoning map, interim zoning ordinance, or interim official control without holding a public hearing on the proposed moratorium interim zoning map, interim zoning ordinance, or interim official control shall hold a public hearing on the adopted moratorium interim zoning map, interim zoning ordinance, or interim official control within at least 60 days of its adoption, whether or not the governing board received a recommendation on the matter from the planning commissioner department. If the governing body does not adopt findings of fact justifying its actions before this hearing, then the governing board shall do so immediately after this public hearing. A moratorium interim zoning map, interim zoning ordinance, or interim official control adopted in this section may be effective for not longer than six months, but may be effective for up to one year if a work plan is developed for related studies, providing for such a longer period. A moratorium interim zoning map, interim zoning ordinance, or interim official control may be reviewed for one or more six-month periods if a subsequent public hearing is held and findings of fact are made prior to each renewal. And whereas a moratorium enacted under RCW 36.78.390 is a method by which local governments may preserve the status quo so that new plans and regulations will not be rendered moot by intervening development. And whereas RCW 36.78.390 authorizes the enactment of a moratorium without a hearing, see also Matson versus Clark County Board of Commissioners, 79WN APP 641904, P. second, 317, 1995. And whereas pursuant to RCW 36.78.390, when the city council adopts a moratorium without holding a public hearing on the proposed moratorium, it must hold a hearing on the adopted moratorium with at least 60 days of its adoption. Whereas the city intends to impose a moratorium on the acceptance, approval, or issuance of building permit applications for construction of new residential structures within the Leita, Hangman, and Grandview Thorpe neighborhoods as further depicted in Exhibit A, which is on file in the city clerk's office. And whereas pursuant to WAC 197-11-880, the adoption of this ordinance is exempt from the requirements of a threshold determination under the State Environmental Policy Act, SEPA. And whereas the city council adopts the foregoing as its findings of fact justifying its adoptions of this ordinance and documenting the existence of an emergency showing this ordinance become effective immediately upon adoption. And whereas the city council finds that the moratorium imposed by this ordinance is necessary for the protection of the public peace, health, or safety, and for the immediate support of the city governments and existing public institutions, now therefore the city of Spokane does ordain Section One moratorium imposed. A moratorium is imposed on the acceptance process and review and approval of building permit applications for construction of new residential structures, including without limitation, single-family residences, duplexes, apartments, multifamily buildings, condominiums, retirement center apartments, manufactured housing, and other structures with self-contained dwelling units hereafter residential structures, SMC, and those portions of the Leita, Hangman, and Grandview Thorpe neighborhoods zoned in the attached Exhibit A referred to herein as the moratorium zone. During the term of this moratorium, the city will not accept process review and/or approve building permit applications for new residential structures for sites in the moratorium zone, but will continue to process applications that were countercomplete as provided in the Spokane municipal code prior to the effective date of this ordinance. This moratorium does not apply to any pending applications that were countercomplete as provided in the Spokane municipal code prior to the effective date of this ordinance. Pursuant to RCW 36.78.390, this moratorium does not apply to building permit applications for the construction of transitional housing or permanent supportive housing in any zones in which residential dwelling units or hotels are allowed or to building permit applications for, or the construction of indoor emergency shelters and indoor emergency housing in any zones in which hotels are allowed. Section Two, purposes and work plan. The purpose of this moratorium is to allow the city adequate time to update the transportation impact fees and general facilities charges it assesses and collects in the Leita, Hangman, and Grandview Thorpe neighborhoods so that the fees, one, are adequate to cover the cost of system improvements that are reasonably related to new growth and development occurring and anticipated in these neighborhoods; two, do not exceed a proportionate share of the cost of system improvements that are reasonably related to the new development; and three, will be used for system improvements that will reasonably benefit the new development. Because of the need to implement the updated transportation impact fees as quickly as possible, thereby shortening the length of the moratorium, the city council hereby suspends the review requirement sent forth in Spokane municipal code 17d.075.140 for the duration of the moratorium adopted by this ordinance. Section Three, duration of moratorium. The moratorium imposed by this ordinance shall be in effect for a period of six months, beginning on the date of the adoption of this ordinance. During this period, the city will work on updating the transportation impact fees and general facilities charges it assesses and collects in the Leita, Hangman, and Grandview Thorpe neighborhoods consistent with Section Two above. Section Four, public hearing on moratorium pursuant to RCW 36.78.390, the city council shall hold a public hearing on this moratorium on November 7, 2022. Immediately after the public hearing, the city council shall adopt findings of facts on the subject of this moratorium. Section Five, severability. If any section, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance should be held to be invalid or unconstitutional by court or competent jurisdiction, such invalidity or inconstitutionality should not affect the validity or constitutionality of any other section, sentence, clause, or phrase of this ordinance. Section Six, declaration of emergency and effective date. This ordinance passed by a majority plus one of the whole membership of the city council. As a public emergency ordinance necessary for the protection of the public peace, health, or safety, and for the immediate support of city government and its existing public institution shall be effective immediately upon its passage without an immediate moratorium on the city's acceptance, processing, approval of applications for new residential structures in the moratorium zone, new growth and development occurring in the Leita, Hangman, and Grandview Thorpe neighborhoods will not be required to pay its proportionate share of the cost of system improvements that reasonably benefit the new development. And the transportation impact fees and general facilities charges collected in the moratorium zone will be inadequate to cover the cost of system improvements that are reasonably related to and reasonably benefit new growth and development occurring and anticipated in these neighborhoods, thereby slowing the city's ability to construct the needed system improvements, undermining the city's legitimate policy protecting the public health, welfare, and safety within the moratorium zone.
Thank you, Ms. Vister. Councilmember Kinnear, you're one of the sponsors of this. You want to tee this up?
Sure. We did this earlier. And I also would like to ask Councilmember Wilkerson, perhaps you'd like to go first. I was chattering the last time.
Well, thank you very much. So this temporary moratorium around the impact fees in the Leita Valley, we heard a lot from our citizens down there. We've heard a lot from WASDOT, transportation, utilities, things that need to go in. So our department was looking at equitable impact fees that need to really be put in place, which they had not been adjusted for some time. So this is a six-month moratorium, just to give them time to get the fees in place, kind of do a reset. I'm just saying a reset, but it's a moratorium. It is not a ban, and it is for six months to allow our departments to do what they need to do.
And I would add, I worked with James Richmond on this, one of our attorneys, and he was hugely helpful. And of course Spencer Gardner, again, always the helpful guy. So appreciate both of you working on this. And just people are saying, well, why did you just spring this on us? Why don't we, why didn't we have advance notice? Well, first of all, their moratorium or generally added at the last minute items in a non-transparent process to prevent someone from taking advantage of the status quo before action can occur. If this item went through the usual process, some property owners would have time to submit applications, thus their project under the lower fees, knowing that we're working to raise our fees. And this would perpetuate the unfair subsidy. So it's imperative that we do this as quickly. It's not unprecedented. We've done it many times before. So that is the reason for this coming at the last minute.
This is just the tea, Councilmember Cathcart, unless you had a motion. Yeah, I'm going to go to public comment, and then we'll go to council commentary. All right, so first up is Chris Gatewood, and followed by Darren Watkins, and then Teresa Simons. Is Chris here? Not seeing Chris, Darren Watkins come up, and then Teresa Simons, and then Becky Dickerhoof.
Darren Watkins from Spokane, also with the Spokane Association Realtors. All that stuff I said about housing before, it still counts. I once had the chance to sit down and speak one-on-one with President Bill Clinton, and I asked him about change. And what he told me was very inspirational. He said, "Change is difficult because it asks for us to abandon what we don't know in exchange, abandon what we do know in exchange for what we don't know." That's why change is difficult. It's also the same when it comes to legislating from emotion. And that's what this feels like. And I have to ask you tonight, is this the right tool to be using to address this issue? It's clearly hastily put together. There's grammatical errors. We only saw it five minutes before this meeting today. And I couldn't help but wonder, what's missing? What information do you not have? I can present to you a few things that I can guarantee you haven't talked about. For example, were you aware that DOT is in fact negotiating larger fees to help impact 195? Were you aware of the impacts to the UGA laws? That if you in any way take units out that can't be used, you've got to find some other place to put them back in. Were you aware that the multitude of agencies that are involved that have purvey over this issue that you don't, but you haven't talked with them about this? Are you aware of, for example, the obligations by this city to build surface streets down there that are badly needed? I understand things change and new people come in, but obligations are obligations. Instead of this tool, may we recommend that we find leadership in this body to take this on now. Launch a summit. Bring together the county and the state to immediately address these issues. They haven't been talked about for 10 years. These people have been ignored for 10 years. That's what this needs, not a moratorium. Moratoriums don't do anything except just get in the way. Let's get some real answers on this because, remember all the things I talked about with housing? Those still apply. We don't want to be obstructionist at this point, at this juncture, because that's how we got into this mess in the first place. Thank you.
Thanks for your testimony. Teresa Simon, after Teresa, Becky Dickerhoof, and then Claudia Lob.
Moratoriums do things, Teresa Simon. They pad the wealthiest pocket. These people own their homes. They own their land. They have rights. They have rights to dream. They have rights to capitalism. They have rights to make choices. Everybody else that has monies down there buying whatever they want, however they want, wherever they want, whenever they want, they're borrowing the money for capitalism from their friends. And they're doing that, and they're all developers, and they're all doing everything. Leave the homeowners alone. Leave the low income alone. Let them make a profit of what they do. DOT's made plenty. They've bought three of my houses. They're not broke. I mean, obviously, they don't think they're broke. The mayor's suing them. So, you know, I mean, if she's got, thinks they got money, let the low income and the poor and the homeowners have rights to their property. Thank you.
Thanks, Teresa. Claudia, excuse me, Becky Dickerhoof, and then Claudia Lob, and then Jennifer Thomas.
Becky Dickerhoof, Spokane, Citizen Action of Leita Valley. I live in the Eagle Ridge Development bordered by US 195 South on the east and Cedar Road on the west. We have three egresses if we must evacuate. We have one road out of my neighborhood on the northwest of over 380 houses with 40 more coming. The state forester told us we are the most susceptible. This year, there were two fires to our south, the Williams Lake Fire 1,600 acres and 27 miles away, and the Mullen Hill Fire 20 acres and 3 miles away. The Mullen Hill Fire was a Level III evacuation. We have good reason to be concerned about our fire protection. More than 3,000 homes are in the permitting process for the city to be built in the Leita Valley. In the next five to 10 years, we will see more than 4,000 new homes built without the planning or funding set aside to address these critical shortfalls. Developments are moving through the permitting process rapidly without considering the interconnections of these developments and their impact. With no adopted neighborhood plans, robust comprehensive plan for the Leita Valley, or sub-area plan, development is happening piecemeal with only utility-related infrastructure considered. Impact fees are one-time charges developers pay to fund these services. Current impact fees are minimal or nonexistent, placing the burden of infrastructure on the taxpayer and the city. The most current US 195 corridor study for the Leita Valley carries a price tag of $100 million to address temporary fixes to the interface of City of Spokane roadways to the US 195. To date, the only funding pledged or secured is $300,000 for a study on reconnecting Inland Empire Way with US 195. Funding for parks, fire protection, police protection, schools, public transportation, and library services, to name a few, all lacks sufficient budgets for current needs in many cases, and most definitely for future needs. Taking all of this into careful consideration, we, Citizen Action for Leita Valley, are calling for a moratorium on major development in the Leita Valley until the following can be adequately addressed. Planning, better assessment of the attributes, characteristics, needs, and potential for the Leita Valley in the future. Funding, securing, identifying, and/or forecasting funding for infrastructure needs in the Leita Valley. This should include the adoption of impact fees for fire, parks, schools, traffic, et cetera, applicable to new development. Infrastructure, determining and then completing the structure of baseline infrastructure improvements. Development approval process. Review and adopt changes to the development approval process that address the lack of infrastructure in the Leita Valley. Preserve unique characteristics of the area, parkland, another land related to need of infrastructure, and regulate the pace and breadth of development. We do not oppose housing. We demand infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Is Claudia here? Come on down. After Claudia, Jennifer Thomas, then Ryan Smith.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Lob, and I reside in the Grandview Thorpe neighborhood. And I'm here today and this evening as a representative of CALV, Citizen Action for Leita Valley. And we are in favor of this moratorium. Personally, I am very concerned with fire protection for the Leita Valley. The lack of street and fire infrastructure throughout this area is putting homes and lives at risk. Access to some of our neighborhoods is limited to one, maybe two roads, making evacuation hazardous and possibly impossible. Low railroad bridges and tunnels are also obstacles to evacuation and prompt response by fire and EMS. Traffic, crowded J-turn band-aid fixes on 195, and the proposed closure of road access to 195 puts successful fire response and evacuation in jeopardy. This year alone, we have seen two, if not three wildfires in our Leita Valley area. Yet, with these issues, approximately 3,000-plus homes are currently in the permitting process with the city, and another 2,000 rumored to be in the wings. Just this past week, a Scottsdale, Arizona developer filed a pre-development application to build 14 three-story buildings. Translated, this means 400 apartments, which will be in addition to the 3,000 homes already in the pipeline. All of these projects will have a positive tax impact for the city, but a very negative impact on the quality of life and safety of residents in the Leita Valley without proper infrastructure. All stakeholders must address the need to expand and update the fire department's resources in this area. We residents are well aware that the Thorpe Road Tunnel has been a concern for the Spokane Fire Department for decades. Sadly, the Spokane Fire Department's Operations Division has not voiced their concerns during the permitting process, specifically during the hearings for these developments. Fire protection in the Leita Valley is insufficient, putting the lives of citizens in jeopardy. Allowing thousands of additional homes in this area without proper infrastructure is outright negligence. Citizen Action for Leita Valley is calling for the moratorium to pause developments so that infrastructure may catch up with this unprecedented growth. Please openly and honestly assess the implications of 3,000 new homes that will have an effect on Leita Valley. Please pause the developments in the permit process and implement a moratorium until adequate resources are in place. It is imperative that city government- It is imperative that city government—
Claudia, the end of your time. But thanks for coming down. Jennifer Thomas, and then Ryan Smith. Welcome back, Jennifer. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Jennifer Thomas, Spokane Home Builders Association. I hear the concerns of the neighborhoods who have shared, and I, I think that those are, I think they’re very valid concerns. My questions would be, why has there not been action prior to this? This isn’t a new issue. We, it, as long as I’ve lived in Spokane, my dad was in the Air Force, we moved here in 89. It was the, I remember going down to games at WSU and driving along 195 and traffic was starting, you know, over the years, I’ve, it’s, traffic has increased. And there’s lots of buildable land, land out there. So, so as a city, when you’re planning, and we look at this area that has only one way in and one way out, my guess is that you have collected impact fees prior to just the last couple of years. And so where have those dollars gone and why has there not been something done sooner? So with this moratorium being in place and needing to assess new impact fees, and there being a hearing on the 7th, I think that I would love to see included in the hearing where prior impact fee dollars have gone, to what projects they’ve gone to. And also, when it comes to impact fees, developers should not have to carry the brunt of building out communities. Developers don’t make a ton of money. They usually make about 6% to 10% on a home. So if they’re doing a whole neighborhood, obviously, they are making more money. But that is the same approximate percentage, maybe a little bit more than what realtors make, and no one is saying that realtors are making money hand over fist. I, I think that the city as a whole, you’re collecting tax dollars from homeowners and from the sale of these homes, and from the jobs that come along with it often. And so I would like to see the burden be shared by the city and not just expecting developers to carry the weight of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hello again. Ryan Smith, Cheney, work in Spokane. I am here to speak in opposition to the moratorium. I’m going to be doing some reiteration, I apologize, but Spokane is in a housing crisis. As of right now, I believe the figure stands that in Spokane, about 25% of the cost to build a new home is just impact fees. And so with the median home price being somewhere in the ballpark of $450,000, that means that impact fees are ranging in the 100-grand ballpark. I, I understand the, the desire to do the study, and I also understand the desire from the neighborhoods for wanting the infrastructure to be there as well. I, I feel as though, I’m no, you know, I, I’m, I’m new to this whole housing thing, but there, there might be an avenue where we can investigate all these things and try to solve the housing crisis and maybe provide the much-needed infrastructure without fully halting development in that area. Thank you so much for your time.
Thanks for testifying, Ryan. All right. That brings us to the end of public comment. Now council commentary. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. You know, I think about the, the tagline of the Washington Post, “Democracy dies in darkness,” and I think that’s exactly what this is. You know, we could have had a conversation around this. We could have thought about better policies around how to avoid essentially just banning housing. Yes, it’s a pause for six months, but it’s still banning for those six months, and it could extend beyond that. And I think that, you know, we could have had a more substantive conversation around, how do we solve this? What do we do? You know, we have a housing crisis, and when you take certain parts of your community offline from new housing, that increases the pressure in the other parts of your community for housing. And we know that there are other areas of our community that have all kinds of traffic issues. Some, you know, on the fringes, Indian Trail, Five Mile, could be areas like around Regal on the South Hill, where we have had a substantial growth and a lot of traffic, creating a lot of issues. And if we start taking places offline from new housing, well, we’re going to very quickly realize that there’s no place for that housing to go. This is not a good policy. But what’s worse, what’s worse than just simply banning housing, is to do so in such a secretive manner. And you, you heard Councilmember Kinnear earlier mention that, you know, we do this routine, we do this all the time. Well, there’s something wrong about that. You should never, ever have government that’s operating in secret. When we get a copy of this at 4:54, and I don’t know when the folks who testified here from Leita Valley heard about this, I’m guessing it was before 4:54 because they were able to get here, but grateful to hear their comments because they’re not wrong. They are not wrong on the infrastructure issues. But again, moratorium not the right policy, and doing it in secret and dropping it at 4:54, an hour before our meeting, I haven’t even had a chance to read this. Now, I heard Terry obviously read it. She read it to everybody. But I have not had a chance to sit down, go through this. I heard grammatical issues are in this, punctuation issues, maybe there’s other issues. I have not had a chance to even look at it. So I, I don’t know. But I tell you, I can’t vote for something that’s done in secret that’s not transparent. You know, it’s really hard to be transparent. You know, it’s an inconvenient thing to do, especially for, for government officials. It’s always easier when you can kind of hide and do things before you, you spring it on the public. But the, the thing is, that’s how good governance happens. That’s how good decisions are made, is when we do it in front of the public and we get your buy-in, we get your input. So, you know, I hope that some positives can come out of this. I do hope that we solve all the issues in Grandview-Thorp and, and Leita Valley in the next six months, and this doesn’t extend beyond six months. I really do hope that that’s the case. But I worry because I just, I know how government operates, and oftentimes, these things take way longer than we anticipate. So I, I just, I worry about that. And I’ll be, I’ll be opposing this, certainly because of the transparency issues, but also I think that there, we could have had a conversation around, you know, the potential liabilities of this, the issues that this will create, how it’ll affect the rest of our community, what this does to our housing crisis. There’s a lot of factors that should have been discussed. I mean, we should have even had an exec session to talk about the legal aspects of this. There could be some liabilities. We don’t know. But I haven’t heard from our attorney because we haven’t had a chance to do that. So there’s just so many unknowns, I cannot vote for something that was sprung on us one hour before this meeting.
Councilmember Trent.
I’ll try and be brief, and I, I want to be very clear. I don’t know, I didn’t count and I should have, but I don’t know how many city council meetings the Grandview-Thorp-Leita Valley neighbors have been in our meetings testifying to the exact same thing they’ve talked about tonight. They’ve also sent email after email after email to council. They’ve drafted their own legislation of ideas they would like to see. So I want to make that clear. We’ve known about this. I also want to say that it’s not my district, but I’ve spent a lot of time up there because so many of the neighbors reached out to me. So I’ve spent a lot of time up there, and I can tell you right now, what is being built up in those areas, just so everybody gets this, it is not affordable housing. These houses are not affordable, right? So they’re high-end housing. But the biggest issue that I had driving through that neighborhood, and I would ask every person in this room, if you’re concerned, drive through the neighborhoods up there, and then think to yourself, what if I’m at home with my children, my family, and there’s a fire? And how am I going to get out? Because there is so much going on up there right now, there is so much fear, there is no way out. It’s the same thing we’ve dealt with for years at North Indian Trail, that one way in and one way out. So I’ve spent time up there, I’ve looked at the developments, I’ve talked to the neighbors. It is heartbreaking that it has gone on this long without anybody trying to put the skids to it. I finally went to the two council members who were involved in the issue and said, what can I do to help because of my fear and because of the fear that I’m hearing from that neighborhood? So moving forward, this will give us some time to hear those voices, to get a plan in place. Nobody should live in any neighborhood, I don’t care what neighborhood it is, and be in fear that if there is a fire or if there is a medical emergency in your house, you got to wonder if somebody’s going to be able to make it in. I mean, or make it out. It’s just, that’s just not right. So I’m going to support this. I am grateful for the neighbors that they’ve continued to let us know how they feel. But please know, this is not, we may come out with a plan that, that we can come up with incentives for affordable housing up there, but what, what I’m seeing up there and what I’ve driven past up there is not affordable housing. So this in no way is going to affect people that need those, that mid-range housing. It’s not going to affect that at all, but it will give some peace of mind to the people that live in that neighborhood and need to have some attention paid to it.
Councilmember Bingle.
All right. The development that’s going up there might not be affordable housing, but it does, as we all understand, housing is a ladder. And so even if it’s, you know, bigger, nicer homes that are going up there, people have to move into those homes. And then the home that they left is now vacant. And so housing being a ladder, while it might not be affordable housing that’s happening up there, it does open up space in the housing ladder for people to move up and move down as needed. And so I, I do, I do have questions on this because it doesn’t actually pause all development up there, right? Because it still allows for the construction of transitional housing or permanent, permanent supportive housing up in those zones. And so it’s not even a pause on all housing. There’s, there’s still housing that can be built up there, it’s just we’re basically saying no to the, to the luxury homes that are apparently the ones that we’re trying to stop. And so, again, to everybody’s points, I mean, the, the points up there are legitimate, you know, but as, as all of us understand how important housing is, you know, we, we continue to talk about, you know, homelessness being a, being a housing problem. And we talk about, you know, the potential lives that are, that are at risk up in this area, and I don’t discount that. I also want us to be consistent in what we’re saying when it comes to housing, that one of the reasons why we’re doing such, taking such big swings on housing, which is something we should all be proud of, and I know we are all proud of, is because there are many, many people on the streets who can’t get into affordable housing. And why, while again, this isn’t the construction of affordable housing, it does free up affordable housing in that ladder. And I think that that’s really important to be, to be said because, you know, we’re, we’re declaring an emergency, and emergency has already been declared when it comes to housing. And all housing is emergency housing at this point, when we are 25,000 units short for a city our size. And so outside of all the fantastic points Councilman Cathcart made when it comes to, to process and us literally learning about this, you know, a couple hours ago and really not even being able to read it. Ms. Fister, you did a terrific job reading that, by the way. That was a lot to say, but you did a great job. And so I, I have problems with it from a, from a process standpoint. You know, if I was, you know, a second late on an amendment, it wouldn’t pass, you know, it wouldn’t move forward. If I was, you know, a day late on trying to get something onto a committee, which has already happened, it’s not going to move forward. But, you know, because the majority of this group believes in this, it’s okay that it, that it happened, you know, a couple hours ago. And so from a process standpoint, I have some real issues from a housing issue, I have some, some real problems from, again, the discrepancy in, we’re not actually pausing all housing, so we can still build housing for, you know, again, permanent supportive housing and transitional housing. I have real issues. If our goal was to stop all housing up there, then we wouldn’t, you know, carve out exceptions here, but we are carving out exceptions. And so I, I won’t be supporting this. I think that there could have been a, a way where I, I maybe could have got on board with something if I had known about it, you know, before, you know, as it was sprung on us at our, at our last meeting, and then, you know, still having to eat dinner and talk to my family before coming into this. I mean, again, we, we, we’re talking literal minutes to look over this and read it and, and to do. And so as a council member, I obviously cannot support anything where I just don’t fully understand, you know, its impacts, haven’t been able to talk to anybody, the lack of inclusion when it comes to people who are, you know, experts in the housing space, I think that becomes a problem. So I, I’ve got a number of problems with it, so I, I won’t be supporting it.
Councilmember Kinnear asked Mr. Gardner to come up. I think she wants to ask him some questions.
Sorry, I know you look like you’re on your way out and probably deserve to go home. But you don’t want to go out in that bad air. So—
I knew I should have left.
See what happens when you hesitate. So I did read a piece of why we do a moratorium last minute. That doesn’t seem to resonate with all council members. Can you enlighten us a little bit more from what I said and why it’s necessary to not have this weeks in advance?
Well, I won’t, I won’t comment on this particular moratorium, but I can comment on the idea of a moratorium in general, and that is that there is an issue that needs to be corrected. And by not, by broadcasting in advance what you’re doing, it lets somebody come in before that issue can be corrected and take advantage of the problem that exists. So I think, you know, the administration didn’t really put this forward, this is really driven by council’s desire to, to move this ahead. But in general, that’s why a moratorium adopts that approach. It’s, it’s really just trying to avoid that, that problem of people getting information in advance and then acting contrary to the, you know, the solution the moratorium is trying to implement.
And then we heard the exceptions that were carved out, and those are state laws, my understanding.
That is true, and I guess since I have the microphone, I will just add that this moratorium does not impact plating actions, which tends to be the lengthier, more involved process in developing housing. So, and that’s actually a lot of the activity that is already occurring in the, in the neighborhood. So I, I thought I would just note that, that there is a carve-out specifically for plating activity, that, that can proceed under the moratorium as written. I don’t have it in front of me, and I didn’t draft it, but that’s, that’s my understanding of it.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so, but I guess in your view, is, is one hour appropriate?
I can’t comment on the, the council process that was used. Like I said, this wasn’t advanced by the administration, so I don’t, I don’t really know what generally happens at the council level. Obviously, you know, with the, with our planning work, we’re doing a lot of, we have a lot of other requirements, outreach and things, not just with council, but with the public and with other departments within the administration. So this, this process is definitely different than what we normally go through, but I don’t, I really have a comment on council’s process.
Maybe to ask the question a different way, had we had an exec session, which I think would have been helpful, on Thursday during our study session, or, or even today, had been briefed prior to 1 o’clock, which is our deadline for amendments, would either of those, in your view, have been detrimental to the outcome of this?
I, I don’t really, I guess I don’t have a comment on that either. I mean, this was really, I think, legal in council, or sort of, well, certain council members were, yeah, were really driving this, so—
And then my last question is, could you, or, or comment maybe, could you just provide a little bit overview, you’ve done it a couple times, the Jacob’s Ladder example of housing and the, the housing ladder and how each piece affects every other piece?
I should just make a habit of bringing that to everyone. No, you can imagine the picture of a Jacob’s Ladder, so you tilt the top and then everything kind of falls down. And I think this is the point you were making, Councilmember Bingle, that as you, as you restrict housing at the top, the buyers are still there in the market, and so they then move down to the next rung, and then the next rung, and then the bottom rung just kind of falls off because the, we have a, you know, if you have a fixed supply of housing and lots of buyers, that’s, that’s just sort of the way the market operates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That’s it for me.
Okay.
Do you have questions for him?
No.
Okay, all right.
Just a comment, so thank you. So just a response to why something hasn’t happened down there in Leita Valley. There was a 195 study that the council just adopted in partnership with WashDOT, so that had, so some dominos had to fall first before we could move forward with doing anything down in that area. And I don’t want to conflate this with a moratorium. The city is just trying to get the impact fees adjusted where they are equitable for new housing that’s going in down there. Yes, we’ve taken up impact fees, but I don’t know, when I, we had the presentation a couple of weeks ago, it was like $700 on a house, which were like the current. To put in that infrastructure is millions of dollars, and the city has to have matching funds to do that. That’s where the impact fees come in. If we don’t have the matching funds, then once again, we’re stalled and the dominos have not fallen. So this is— So, this is just to let us right-size what those new impact fees should be. You've heard Mr. Gardner say the plating process is still going forward. We're talking six months, so we're not stopping anybody from building anything down in that area. So, it's a necessary evil, if you want to call it that, because it all costs money. And it's not all on the developers. The city has a huge portion to pay in that also. But how do we spread those costs around? So, should the people in Hilliard be paying for the infrastructure down on 195 in Leita Valley? No. And we're not asking Eagle Ridge to pay for Hilliard. So, we have to look at this at a holistic, holistic view, and we're not just trying to put it all together. It's not secretive. It's a money issue. Really, that's our biggest challenge going forward, and it just gives us time to let the city do what it needs to do, to get ready for the next step in the development of Leita Valley and 195 to meet the needs of the people who have come before us, who we know that needs to be put in place.
Councilmember Stratten.
I just want to add one thing that just occurred to me as I'm sitting here, listening to people. This neighborhood is represented by Councilmember Wilkerson and Councilmember Kinnear. They were voted to represent these neighborhoods. I was, I am happy to support this, but I also want to say that if this neighborhood was in any other district on this dais and you were representing your district, I would support that. I would support the people that live in your district. And I think, I know we're disagreeing on this, but maybe that's one of the most important things that we have to remember, that we have neighborhoods, they support us, they elect us to represent them. That's what's happening here. It may not have been, you know, something that was, that was brought up in executive session or planned two months out, but it's something that, that these two elected representatives from that neighborhood made that decision to bring it forward when they did, and I support it, and I support and applaud them for sticking with their neighborhood, listening to their neighborhood, and at least helping them take a deep breath for six months before moving this forward. So, thank you both.
Councilmember Bingle.
And again, I, the, the standard that you just brought up of the council members that represent that area, you know, being represented in that process, I really like this idea. And I just want to, again, bring this back to all of the actions that have been happening at the WashDOT camp in, in our district and how this standard is, again, not equally applied to us in District One when it comes to all the actions, all the, all the things, all the conversations that are taking place when it comes to the WashDOT camp in, in our neighborhood that has 600 and 700 people on one city block right there that has grave impacts in our, in our neighborhood. We're not represented in the same way. And so, I'm fine with this standard. If this is the standard that we want to move forward, I would just ask that we receive that same courtesy on, on the big issues in, in our neighborhood as well, because there are real big issues where we're not represented. So, I, like I said, I think it's a fine standard. I just want it equally applied.
Councilmembers of Pone.
Yeah, I don't have too much more to add. I just agree with a lot of the statements about how process is not ideal, but it was necessary in this case for the fact of moratorium cannot be publicized a long time beforehand. I agree, we have a housing crisis and a housing issue. I don't think six months on a limited part of the supply is going to dramatically change our housing across the city. And I think it's really important to emphasize, again, what Councilmember Wilkerson was saying there at the end, that this is about the impact fees, and it's about making sure that's equitable across the city, because right now, we're expecting other neighborhoods, including Hilliard or West Central or East Central, to be paying for these large improvements in these wealthier neighborhoods, and that's not equitable, and it's not fair. So, we need to recalibrate, and this buys us the time to do it.
Any other comments? I'm just going to speak briefly to two pieces, really, of the substance and the process. On the substance, I could not agree more with those of you who have said this should have been addressed literally 20 years ago, but it was not. When we created Eagle Ridge and the Leita Valley development boom, we, it wasn't handled. And essentially, our impact fees in Leita Valley were mixed with pretty much the whole South Hill. And so, it just, the money wasn't targeted for that there. We, several months ago, our city employees started the process to divide it and to really target the impact fees for Leita Valley, for spending in Leita Valley. It takes a long time, and what they do is they figure out all the projects, just the transportation projects, that need to be spent in order to make it functional. And those of you who, who don't know this, essentially, all those plats that are out there, all those thousands of units are in a de facto building moratorium right now because WashDOT has put their thumb down and said, "You can't do it until you build all these projects." So, those can't be built right now. Really, what this moratorium is the road to get those built. And the reason that is, is that it's, you know, estimated, depending on which projects you include, $50 to $80 million just for the transportation, not for the water, to get those projects done. And the challenge is, is if we don't adjust the impact fees, the rest of the city is going to be paying a lot of that money. Even with the impact fees, at least the proposal that we had, was that the developers of the new housing would be charged about 50% of those projects, leaving the rest of it to the city. It could go higher to 60 or 70%, but it's a market difference. And as was mentioned, it traditionally has been in the hundreds, maybe a little over 1,000. So, it's nowhere near to 25% of the cost of building a home. It's fairly nominal, but those dollars add up, and then we can leverage them. So, this proposal is a way to get some money from these large new homeowners, and it'll be a very small percentage of the cost of their home, to pay for infrastructure that they will enjoy and benefit from. And it will cure essentially the sins of generations back where they just didn't do the planning and didn't require. It seems a little unfair to some to say, "Well, just the new people now are going to have to pay, and all the people who live there already don't have to pay as much." But we don't have a legal tool to deal with that. And one thing they say about when you find yourself in a hole is stop digging, and that's what really this is trying to do. It's a brief pause. It's not a ban. That housing will be coming. In fact, it will probably be coming faster, because this, according to Mr. Richmond today, the report from planning only is going to impact around 30 single-family homes over the next six months, not the thousands that could be built if we get the funds and the promise of the funds for infrastructure. So, I think the moratorium is a great idea because it's going to unlock this challenge that we've had for years, and nobody's been willing to step up for. And it's also broader than just transportation impact. It's also water, and perhaps maybe fire and parks as well when we look into it. But in the end, it will help the developers that are there. It'll help the housing crisis there, and it will be more equitable and it will be safer. I just want to address the process briefly, and that is this. I've been here now six and a half years. We've probably had three or four moratoriums, and we were advised by legal and all of them to do it pretty much the same way. No public notice. You just do the moratorium, and then it's only temporary. It's only for a few months, and then there is a public hearing that comes up. People get to be heard. We got to hear both sides of it by great speakers tonight, so we are informed of that. But that's just what you do. It's just because the unfortunate thing, the way our laws are in Washington, is that when you file your building permit, you vest under the laws that exist. So, that's a unique thing in Washington, and that's why we have to do it that way. And that's what City Legal advises us. That's what we do it. The few times we do moratoriums, and it's not ideal, it's not that satisfying, but given the law vesting in Washington and the desire, as Mr. Gardner said, not to let someone take advantage and exploit a current problem in the middle of us fixing it, is why we do it. It will only be a few months, and hopefully, we'll get all this sorted out. We'll get those dollars rolling to build those streets, build those water mains, sewer mains, and maybe some fire stations in parks as well. With that, prepare to vote. All right, that passes five to two. Brings us to resolutions and final ordinances.
Resolution 2022-80, joint city-county resolution adopting the revised Feltz Field Airport layout plan and delegating authority to the Spokane Airport to approve and adopt future pen and ink changes to the airport layout plans.
All right. Teresa Simon, do you want to testify on that? She says no. All right, is there any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero.
Resolution 2022-81, approving settlement with plaintiff Michael Novak for $275,000. Mr. Novak is one of three plaintiffs in a lawsuit against the city arising from a January 7, 2019 officer-involved shooting.
And just by way of a little bit of background, so this case is set for trial in Spokane Superior Court. There are multiple plaintiffs. This settlement is with just one of the plaintiffs, Mr. Novak's father. The other claims will continue on. Ms. Simon.
The Novaks deserve every dime they get. They've lost a son they didn't need to lose, their families affected, and there's no excuse for what happened. He was shot in the back.
Thanks for your testimony. Any council commentary? Prepare to vote. All right, that passes seven to zero. Next ordinance.
Ordinance C 36262, amending the Spokane Fair Elections Code to reduce redundancies and duplication with state law, amending Sections 1.07.005, 1.07.030, and 1.07.070, and repealing Sections 1.07.080 and 1.07.100 of the Spokane municipal code.
Teresa Simon? She's declining. Any council commentary? Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, when we, when we first broached this idea, I was, I was in favor. I thought the, the Fair Elections Code that we, we passed in 2017 and then overrode the mayor's veto in 2018, I thought it was, I thought it was bad, and we were updating it. The reason why I ended up not being a co-sponsor of this when I was originally going to be is because it keeps city contractors from being able to donate to political candidates, but it still allows unions to do so. For me, to update and make elections fair, I think we should just have one standard for everybody, just let everybody do the same thing, make it fair and equal. And so, for banning, you know, city contractors, then I think that we should ban city unions as well, or if we're allowing unions to donate, then I think that we should also allow city contractors to donate. And so, for me, there's just, you know, a, a problem right there when, when it comes to the amount that we can donate. Also, I went back and I watched some of the videos, and I'm just curious, you know, from, from back then, you know, the reason why we did the $500, according to former council president Stuckert, was because of our median income being lower than the rest of the state. And so, bringing us to 50%, the $500 threshold actually put us more in line with the rest of the percentage of household income with the rest of the state. And so, his argument, and actually, arguments shared by, you know, council president Beggs and, and others, was that this would give power to smaller voices. And so, with that being said, I, I, I wonder if then by transitioning away from 500 to a, to 1,000 on this, if that continues to give power to smaller voices, or if that actually counters what, what we thought was going to happen. And so, I guess, you know, I would, I would open it up to, to comment on that, to see if we're still giving power to the smaller voices.
Councilmembers of Pone.
Yeah, to directly answer that question, the reason I proposed this change was to give power back to small voices. I think the idea when this ordinance was passed originally was to lower that and give the power to the small voices, but we actually saw that it had the inverse impact and that if we look at the money that it increased from when, and two independent expenditures and third-party PACs from before and after the ordinance increased, it was triple, quadruple fold the amount of dollars that was being spent by independent expenditures. And so, what we saw is not that the smaller donors were having influence, but rather, larger donors were directing all their money to those PACs that are having a bigger say. So, I think this just realigns, this is the biggest change in the entire code, is just changing it from $500 to $1,000. There's also some wording changes that don't have a, a huge impact, but the idea is to bring it back into code with the rest of the state to what the PDC allows and with the idea of giving power back to people, back to campaigns themselves, instead of having third-party expenditures influencing our local elections.
Is this ordinance going to limit third-party expenditures, NIES?
Unfortunately, we're not able to because of the Supreme Court ruling.
So, we believe that by changing it from the 500 to 1,000, this then is going to give power back to the smaller voices and reduce the amount of money that's spent on local elections through PACs and independent expenditures?
I would argue that it gives power back to smaller donors who can do it. $1,000 compared to a $50,000 donation allows them more power to do it. And so, it gives greater power to those groups, and that's why I made this proposal, and you originally agreed with increasing it to 1,000.
No, I, I think $1,000 is the way that we should go. I'm just, I'm just curious, was, so, the first one that we, we passed, it just, it just didn't work? That's what we're saying? It just, it just failed in our, in our intentions? Okay.
I'll address a little bit, since you mentioned me. You know, the purpose partially was to drive more donors by requiring candidates to reach out to more people, since they could only get $500 from a person. And I think the statistics show that that worked. So, for most of the campaigns in the two cycles that we've had, there was a significant increase in individual donations. So, that part worked. I agree with councilmembers of Pone that in the overall election, how much money was being spent did not go down. I don't, I can't say that there's a cause and effect on it because we were so, in the last two cycles, so swamped with outside money, but I think, I don't think there's really any evidence to show that this necessarily changed it to be that way, but it does. I think I, you know, went, watched two cycles. I listened a lot to the two of you as the two people who most recently went through, and you were in favor of changing it to 1,000. So, even though I was for keeping it at 500 before, I basically said, "Okay, well, they recently ran. I think I'm going to listen to them." I also talked to a few campaign treasurers and said, "Having that difference between the city and the state on that was problematic." And I think the argument that, "All right, we're in the land of huge third-party independent expenditures. Give a little more room to individual donors to go up to the 1,000," was compelling to me, and I'm basically like, "Okay, this, we'll try this now and see what happens in the next two cycles." So, that's my perspective.
Councilmember Kinnear.
So, it's my understanding that contractors do donate, and some of us up here have received money from those. So, I'm, I'm not sure what you're talking about, councilmember, with allowing contractors, because they do. We've had, if you look at the PDC reports, you will see that some of us up here received those contributions from contractors. Now, they may not have had current contracts with the city, but contractors still have donated.
Yeah, no, I, I think that this, this ordinance, unless I'm mistaken, and you can correct me if I'm mistaken, but in the ordinance, as, as we were talking about it, councilmembers of Pone and I, I had mentioned city contractors, and it was explicitly stated that people who had received city contracts were not going to be able to, to donate.
It's my understanding, and Mr. Sipone, correct me, that you need to be currently, have a current contract.
Current contract, but the individual can still do it, it's just not as a business.
Right. So, you can still get, it's just...
The principles of a business, though.
It depends how much they own of the company.
Right, the principals cannot. Right.
Well, okay.
And, and obviously, the purpose of, you know, finance regulation is to, you know, prevent, you know, money... you know, money from influencing elections or from being able to drive sweetheart deals to certain groups, right? You can make the argument that city contractors donating could do that. You can also make the argument that unions donating to campaigns for, you know, deals that are negotiated in back rooms, you know, that are not public, that those also have the ability to affect massive, I mean, tens of millions, hundreds of millions of dollars deals that are taking place in back rooms, that are not open to the public in the same way that a city bidding process would be.
I'm just going to push back slightly, that every union contract we do happens here, and we can vote it up or down. So the actual deal that gets made when we vote is made in full public.
But I would argue, though, that there can be promises made on a campaign trail, there can be all kinds of things said, and if the public doesn't have the opportunity to observe those negotiations, we don't know what the opening bid is. We don't know necessarily, the public doesn't know necessarily all of that info. They don't necessarily know kind of how those negotiations went about to get to that final deal. And so I think the argument is simply just treat everybody equally that, because the whole concept, and it's written into the ordinance, quid pro quo corruption. That's what this is trying to avoid, is quid pro quo corruption. Doesn't matter what organization you are, if you're a contractor, union leadership, whatever. I mean, it doesn't necessarily have to be real quid pro quo corruption, just the appearance of quid pro quo corruption. And that's really what this is trying to get at. And so I think the argument is just treat them both the same. Frankly, I would support going either direction, allowing contractors or simply saying collective bargaining units are going to be treated the same way. That doesn't affect the union members, that doesn't affect folks down the line, but regardless, this was an amendment proposed, it didn't get accepted, so it's kind of moot at this point. But I think that's the issue at hand, so.
Counselmember Zepone?
Yeah, I pulled up a couple of the numbers to say how it's changed over time, and to the number of unique contributors to campaigns from 2015 to 2019, we've seen a 59% increase. So the number of people did increase, but at the same time, we've seen about a 319% increase in independent expenditures. So obviously, that's not comparable, but if we want campaigns to be competitive with this outside influence, we shouldn't be capping them in half by that amount.
And again, I don't agree with it. I think we should go to 1,000. My big issue is that keeping city contractors from doing it to avoid sweetheart deals should also include unions, because they are negotiating deals with the city the same as city contractors are.
Any other commentary? All right. Prepare to vote. All right, it passes six to one. And that brings us to first reading ordinances. I'll have you read all the ones that we're looking at tonight, and then I'll invite, I've got several people signed up to testify.
Ordinance C.36250 relating to the East Bragg Parking and Business Improvement Area Regarding Changing Certain Assessment Rates Amending Spokane Municipal Code Section 4.31C.040. Ordinance C.36270 of the City of Spokane, Washington, Suspending the Acceptance of Annual Applications for Amendments to the City's Compliment Plan Until Completion of the City's Compliment Plan Update for Shaping Spokane Housing and Deferring and Suspending the Processing of Applications Which Cannot Be Completed Before December 31, 2022. Ordinance C.36271 is deferred to September 19. Ordinance C.36272 Relating to the Protection of Public Lands and Properties Amending Sections 12.02.1002, 12.02.1010, 1012, and 1014 of Article 6 of Title 12.02 of the Spokane Municipal Code For Direction is Deferred on First Reading Ordinances.
All right, and we have several people signed up to testify, starting with Teresa Simon. Well, this is your chance to testify on this one, if you want. There is open forum coming next, so. Okay, and then Melanie, I think, Rens? Got that? Rick Bochuk? After, this includes, yeah, this includes first reading on the camping. Yep. All right, then come down, and Rick will be next. This is multiple things, but it includes camping. And so it'll be Teresa, and then Rick, and then Dave Bilson.
We put them in survival classes at the air bases. We taught them to live in tents. We sent them off to war. We stuck them in trauma. We don't even have housing for them. Their mental health isn't right. They took bullets for us. We have one of the largest populations in the nation of veterans that are homeless. They're all right. They know how to take care of themselves. They're not asking for much. There's no place for them to go. You have 1,000 or more. Go to City Gate. Go to your 30 people sitting on Trent on top of contaminated ground that they never bothered to test, that probably wasn't voted correctly and should be checked. They got to be someplace. We don't have a place. We don't have places. We're talking about all the rich people living up in Eagle Ridge and Leita. And, I mean, these people are living in a bush, get over it. You know, you walk to the courthouse, and there's somebody sitting there, and they're suffering, they're deaf, and they're trying to get, you know, lunch. You pull five bucks out of your pocket to buy them lunch. You give them a ride, you can't hope. It's time to back off and come up with plans. This isn't a plan. This isn't a plan. Leave them alone. What do I need to tell you? Give them tents, buy them tents, quit taking their tents, quit taking their clothes, quit taking their medicine. Where do you want them to go? You've blocked off the bridges. Nadine Woodward said she wanted the motel up on the hill. It's public record that she wanted it, and now she's arguing against it. Does she have any idea what she wants or where these people are going to go? They're homeless. They barely have food. I'm out there with the med doctors that are treating these people triage on site. There are veterans, maybe not all the ones that can't hope, but a lot of the ones in the bushes that we're talking about. Back off, leave them alone. Stop criminalizing them, quit taking their things. Give them hope. Give them love. What do you want? What do you guys want for them? I mean, honestly, what is your plan? What do you want? What do you want for them? Tell everybody exactly what it is you want for our veterans. What did you want for them when they signed up and went in the service? What did you want when they went on the tank? What did you want when they took the bullet? What did you want when they went out and did medical care, trying to get the dead bodies out of the field and the injured bodies?
Thanks for testifying, Teresa. Rick Bochuk, then Dave Bilson, and Chris Schuler.
You know, I'm looking at this camping ordinance, what I'm reading, and, you know, like, you got the prohibitions here, and there's a couple of them I'm looking at. I'm looking at the one that says prohibiting camping along the banks of Spokane River, Leita Creek, unless there's no available shelter space. This no available shelter space issue has been going on for a long time. Like, there's still forced religious places, don't really force religion on you. I don't think they should be in there, unless they put it, the thing is that you can't force religion on people. That's one of the, that's wrong. That's against our First Amendment. And now, as far as the railroad thing, I can relate to that, because I used to cut up railroad bridges. And the problem with railroad bridges, and I don't think the city tests this area, and they should, is that they have lead paint. And if you ever go to the Maple Street Bridge where they got the murals over there, I mean, I know Kate and Todd Benson, and I told them about their mural. I says, you're going to do this mural here, and I says, and it's going to get these yellow streaks coming down from the bridge. I says, that's not rust. I says, that is lead paint residue, and that's what you have in railroad bridges. So I get why you wouldn't want to have them there, but I don't think that people understand that, what I just said. Lead poisoning is really bad stuff. I had lead poisoning, and when they had leaded gas, they used to tell you that you could walk three blocks around and get lead poisoning. Well, I've had it worse, and so I can understand about the train things. My perspective, not yours, mine, that is an actual health thing. And I think they should test the railroad bridges, how much lead is in that area. Maybe you understand why people kind of like go a little wacko, too. But I'm still going back to that shelter space. It should not be at a place that is forcing religion, you know, because there's people that are of complete different religions, and they should not be forced into Christianity. Christianity is just one religion. It is not the First Amendment religion. It's just one. There's several others. There's controversial religions, and these people should not have to go there at all, if that's the thing. If there's a available, no, they shouldn't be sent there. Thank you very much.
Thanks for testifying, Rick. Dave Bilson, then Chris Schuler, and then Rachel Riley.
Good evening, folks. First, let me say the Seahawks won 17 to 16. This proposal is worse than the one I saw 19 years ago. It criminalizes homelessness and violates the Eighth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States with its cruelty. To bring legal action that can jail and fine the homeless is by definition a cruel and unusual punishment. When you sentence people to shelters, it gets even more cruel. Have any of you ever spent a night in a shelter? I spent a winter there. To this day, I cannot wear a hospital gown, because it reminds me of that traumatic crap. And that's what you're sending people into, to situations like that. This proposal punishes a person for lacking the means to live out the universal and unavoidable consequences of being human. To survive on the streets, for some, means staying awake at night to avoid assault, to avoid rape, to avoid theft, and too many other problems that happen to those who sleep rough. Then they are roused during the day by guys in black uniforms that act like the Nazis they look like, telling them they have to move. When was the last time you on the council had to move? Everything you own. That's what these people are putting up with. They have to move someplace else when they have no place to put their stuff. That's when they lose it. I've seen people lose baby pictures. I've seen people lose ultrasound pictures of their children, lose medications, lose items that people, that the city just threw in a truck without any regard. And this will happen daily to those already out there, because a landlord said the same thing, move your stuff. Now, I just heard Mr. Bingle talk about 25,000 units short. We're 25,000 units short, and you're going to go mess with people that can't find a damn place to live? This, at any anti-camping ordinance, needs to be gotten rid of. And I will say this right now, this shall not pass!
Thanks for testifying, Dave. Chris Schuler, then Rachel Riley, and then Heath Harris.
Hello, City Council, Mr. Beggs. I'm Chris Schuler, citizen of Spokane. This ordinance is talking about the no camping zones in the city of Spokane on city property. It's not talking about the whole wide world, because the council can only create no camping zones on city land. And so I do support that, that the cities should have no camping zones, public parks, the waterways, things like that, which is different than blocking businesses. But this, it also says that this is based off of, it's the city's response to the Martin versus City of Boise, which, so I want to speak some facts about that, that I think you're not being transparent on, you're being misleading to the poor people. And so I'm going to say some of them. Like, Martin versus City of Boise is a ninth district up there, higher court ruling, that covers multiple states, definitely the entire state of Washington, okay? And there's a whole bunch of stuff that it does not say, and you, Mr. Beggs, with lawyer-minded skill set, should know the importance of things that it does not say, okay? Martin versus City of Boise is directed at a city, because the question was about a city. A court's not going to answer questions that aren't in there, like about the state. And so Martin versus Boise does not say that the city of Spokane is required to take homeless people who are camping, sleeping on state land, and coerce them onto city land. It doesn't say that. The shelter is supposed to be enough to cover the people on the city. It doesn't say that the city of Spokane is required to provide shelter for the entire state of Washington. It doesn't say that at all. And so regarding all the things that it doesn't say, what we need to happen is we need to have Camp Hope versus the state of Washington. And I nominate their host, Jules Helpingham, to, could do that, and do the exact same thing that just happened to our city of Spokane, where we can make the state, they're on state land. The state itself qualifies for that Martin versus Boise, and you know that. You just don't want the poor people to know that. A precedent has been set. The state is responsible for people who are camping on state land. And so they should do that. They could get a 5,000-person shelter on state land by state funding, if they go after the bigger pocketbook, which is the state. The city's already done its job. We have a city shelter, and when you count the homeless people, you're only supposed to count the people who are sleeping on city property. You cannot count the people who are sleeping on state property. That would be fraudulent.
Thanks for testifying, Chris. Rachel Riley, then Heath Harris, and then William Healy.
Hello, council. My name is Rachel Riley. Okay, sorry.
And you live in Spokane, Rachel?
I do, sorry. Yes, I do live in Spokane. I'm so sorry. So I can't pretend to understand what homeless people affected by this ordinance even go through, but I know what I've gone through, and it's nothing in comparison to what an average homeless person even faces. How my unstable housing, even though I've never slept on the streets, is detrimental to my mental health. I've been in and out of psychiatric hospitals, and my unstable housing is a very large factor in these days. I retained a permanent injury to my ankle. You probably saw it as I was walking up, due to a severe suicide attempt. And even with all that, I'm in a better situation than those affected by this, because I've never been without a roof over my head. Sleeping on the streets is rough on people, and it affects their physical and their mental health tremendously and in a negative way. But some have found a support system and stability in the camps that they have. And having police come and destroy their attempts at normalcy in their lives will do nothing but drive more to turn to suicide or self-mutilating behaviors. And if we want to combat this problem, we should help these people with a truly safe place for them to sleep, that allows them to have animals and their belongings, that, and sometimes these animals are like, support animals for them. Like, my cat is super important to me. Sorry, I didn't write that down. I just need to add that. I don't know what I would do without her. And we should treat the underlying issues, such as these mental disorders caused by trauma that are causing this homelessness in the first place. Instead of pretending this problem doesn't exist and demonizing those struggling, if we want to fix this problem, we need to have compassion and empathy for those in a less fortunate situation as we are. Because despite any of the struggles that they face, at the end of the day, these are human beings, and they are just like you and me, and they deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Next is Heath. Next is Heath Harris, and then after Heath, William Heelings, and then Derek Zant.
Heath Harris, resident of Spokane. I live just east of, or, yeah, east of Downriver. And public use of those lands is public use. But there has to be regulations, like we talked, you all talked about zoning regulations, building codes, whatnot. There has to be the same, in my opinion, for public use of lands. For 15 years I've been here, I've walked gratefully along those trails along the river. And the last four years, it's been noticeably difficult with trash and safety, fires, the last three years. I reported a fire and was on site with the fire department as we extinguished a fire. So I know the empathy, but there has to be regulations. If not, all the growth you're talking about, all the positives about living amongst nature is going to be, it's just, it's going to be detrimental to the city itself. So again, trying to, I don't have the answers. I can only, I can only base my knowledge on the 15 years of hiking along that section of the river. There has to be some controls over it. And I'm empathetic. I lived in a 1977 mobile home Dodge RV for five years to buy my first house in that neighborhood. And I'm grateful I can, I'll be walking down there until my legs don't move anymore, hopefully. But I hope the kids, and I hope you guys can establish a legacy so grandkids can see the eagles, and they can see the osprey, and they can see the beavers, and they can see the wildlife and enjoy the wildlife in an empathetic way. But there has to be some regulations. Again, the collection of trash I've done over 15 years, thankfully, Downriver Golf Course takes it because I don't have the trash collection at my house to accept all the stuff I find. And the safety of the kids, again, with some of the needles and everything I've located and found and put in bottles and dropped at the Downriver, that has to be considered. So I think I agree with the ordinance. I think it should be extended along that section of the river, more than 30 feet, to take into consideration that section of the river with the road. Just make that whole section not campable. It just has to be regulations. Thank you for listening to me.
Thanks for coming down, Heath.
Yep.
William Heelings, and after William is Derek Zant. Welcome.
My name is William. I live downtown Spokane. I'm kind of in agreement with your ordinance. As someone that lives just a few blocks from here, I mean, I could walk out my door and I'll see a homeless person, which he's not a criminal. I don't agree that they're criminals, but he's with his foil, doing his drugs, and he has no care. And me, I have to walk past that. He apologizes, you know, it's whatever. But, so, I see things like that. I see people getting assaulted. I don't know if these are by homeless people. I mean, you've had people come up here and talk about it. And, I mean, I'm an avid cyclist. I ride all over Spokane on my bicycle. I see homeless encampments everywhere. I've called 311 to report bonfires underneath a spray on the Ben Burr Trail. Nothing got done about it. It's a bunch of people with bikes and trash. I go down by the river, Tuffy's Trail. Guess what I see? Trash all along the river. Now, I understand people are homeless, but there's a reason why we can't fish and eat out of the river. I'm surprised natives aren't up here talking about that. It's kind of disgusting. But then again, if we talk bad about the people down by the river, they get a, you know, I just don't understand it. Something needs to be done. And maybe by you and Lori, it's, you know, something's going to be done. And I, and you know, Camp Hope, that's just sad. I've talked about this several times, about the same incident. People are still living there. It's going to start getting cold here soon. What are you going to do then? People are going to be up here talking about warming shelters. I mean, it's just out of hand. And it's not just here. It's all over the United States. And it's pretty sad that I live in a country that I fought for, and I've been around the world, and this is what I see in my own city. So that's all I got to say.
Thanks for coming down, my name. Derek Zant.
First, thank you Spokane council members. Council president begged for the time to speak today. My name is Derek Zant. I'm just here to speak on this ordinance at hand today.
And you're from Spokane?
Yes, I am. I missed that part, thank you. I wanted to read what I wrote about what I found down around the Lata Creek area, area just south of I-90, last September 3rd. On September 3rd, an arrest was made in Lata Creek area, just south of I-90, for starting fires. We walked that area later that day. We found that wildlife is being consumed, at least one colony of marmots, songbirds, and pretty much everything else they can catch. They smoked the marmots out of their holes, but little crosses where the bones were buried. Bird carcasses can be seen strung together and being used to further these activities. Other carcasses can be found in and around the campsites. We also found the creek polluted with garbage and discoloration of the water in several places. The banks are heavily polluted with human waste and garbage. Environmental testing or remediation is needed to restore the area before the waters rise and carry everything downstream. I'm sure that these ecological concerns are not the first time you've heard them, but I just wanted to bring this up so I can talk about the conditions that these people are living in. There's several doctor-level studies out there right now that support what I'm about to say, and that is that allowing the people to live in this situation is actually doing them more harm than good. Hepatitis C infections, other infectious diseases, and things that add to the degradation of their mental state. It's, we need to do something about it. The way to do this, I think, is not necessarily the way that you're proposing, but a different way that allows them to be in a place where they can receive what they need, not this. Thank you for your time today.
Thanks for coming down, Derek. We're going to take a five-minute break. We still have, we're about to go to open forum, so the legislative session is over. We still have a lot of people that would like to testify, and, but it's been a long time that we've been sitting here, so I will say at 8:45, you can start up again.
All right, gaveling us back into session. And so first up was Teresa Simon. If you're here, Teresa. Here she comes.
She's coming.
After Teresa is Beth Zant, and then Melanie Rents.
All right, you want to do this up here?
Open forum.
Oh, cool.
And before we start, I will say, we probably have more people that they all testified for three minutes than we have time for tonight, so please be focused to help the other people who haven't spoken yet.
Do you have any to pull this?
I don't know.
Not that one.
Yeah.
Last night it was that one. They said, okay, get me on if you can. Well, that's me. Okay, so I want to talk about, let's start with Bingle's email.
Teresa, before you start, could you try to address to me and not really make personal talks about individual council members?
Oh, I'm not making a talk, I'm reading an email.
I know, but I'm just--
This is a city council member email.
I know, you can read the email, I'm just saying.
Okay. I said, I think it was interesting that you would think I would carry or ask me tonight about gun laws and carrying.
I'm sorry, but I really have, I think this is violating our rules.
I was sitting in the hallway when I was--
Teresa, just wait for a moment, I'm going to pause for a second. So, council members can make a motion that someone's out of order and we'll--
Well, I do.
I know.
We don't address specific council members during open forum.
I'm not, I'm reading, I'm reading an email.
Teresa, Teresa, it's the conversation we're having right now, okay?
Okay.
So, just hang on for a moment.
So, I would ask that we--
I'll second your motion.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on to the next thing.
Teresa, we have to actually have a little vote first, but--
Oh, okay.
So, any discussion on the motion?
Do we have any kind of a suggestion on how she could get her message out but not shut her down?
Well, the question is whether she can do it in open forum. She can obviously send us anything that she wants.
Oh, I already did.
Okay, Teresa?
And then I talked to the city--
Teresa, just, we're talking here, okay?
Okay.
We'll get--
Let's not be afraid of the facts.
Teresa, just, let me, I can only deal with one conversation at a time, okay? Anyway, so the question is whether it's out of order to refer to individual emails--
Okay, I won't refer to an individual, how's that?
Can we finish, please?
Counselor, can you?
Yes.
See, she needs to follow the rules too, so, okay. So, the question is whether it's out of order in our rules to go over individual emails to council members during open forum or testimony. That's, that's what's before us at the moment. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor of finding it out of order indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm going to say aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So, it'd be out of order to talk about individual emails.
Okay, so let's not talk about the email. Let's talk about being approached by a city council member out in the hallway who had a discussion with me about guns. And then I wanted to, I sat and thought about why the council member would confront me about guns after I had already been a victim in City Hall. So, I got a written apology that they didn't basically mean to startle me, and actually I was really bothered, I felt like I was honed out. So, let's go on to the next thing. I contacted the city attorney's office, who decided that a sign outside that says, guns are not allowed in City Hall, and then you go on to read it, and really, if you could read the sign, you see, if you were trying to read the sign and you were standing in front of the sign, the door opens and the sign goes behind everything. So, you really don't know what the sign said, if you needed to know what the sign said, because it's hiding behind everything. So, that sign should actually be put in the public eye for when they come through the door. And really, what the sign says is no guns allowed in City Hall. That's not true. Now, if the city attorney had done something to remedy the sign, I probably wouldn't be standing here, but the fact of the matter is concealed weapons are allowed in City Hall, and the sign is inaccurate, and they should fix the sign, not to say no guns allowed in City Hall, but only concealed weapons are allowed in City Hall. But they didn't elect to change that, nor did they change the typo on the sign, which should probably have the letter B. And Chief Maedel wants to know where your signs are at because they're wrong, and I have an email from him, should it be appropriate to put up his email?
No.
Okay, so Chief Maedel, that's the guy that's at the top of the Spokane Police Department, says your signs are wrong, and I think maybe somebody should get hold of him to explain why you have eliminated open carry as allowed versus concealed carry, because concealed carry guns are allowed in City Hall. And I thought about not coming down here and talking, because I thought the whole world didn't need to know that concealed weapons were allowed in City Hall, but I guess they do, so you can fix your sign. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Teresa. All right, and then Beth, if you want to approach the podium, and then, I don't think Melanie, and, not sure if it's Perry or Rents, but she wasn't here earlier, so I don't think she's here. After Beth, then is Antoine Valone, and then Brian Lewis. Beth, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Thank you. The Catholic Church is to prop--
Just one thing, could you just introduce your name and where you live?
My name is Beth Zant, and I am a citizen of Spokane for the past 20-something years. The Catholic Church is to propaganda is what Da Vinci was to painting. They're masters at portraying any opposition to them as vile, evil, subhumans, and Spokane fell for it. Now, don't get me wrong, smart people fall for BS all the time. Here in America, we call it a political campaign, present members excluded, I'm sure. But no matter what you call it, propaganda is propaganda, and it's never used in a benign manner. And the Catholic Church has a phenomenal history, gorgeous cathedrals, breathtaking art, millions slaughtered for the sin of existing outside of the Church's racist, misogynistic, homophobic worldview, which is why it's infuriating to me to see a so-called progressive council fall for their propaganda and bend over backwards to kiss the papal ring. I see people claiming to be champions of women, of minorities, of the LGBTQ community, fawning over the Catholic Charities, despite the director of the Catholic Charities saying it was a racist organization, despite the Church's sordid history of butchering those they consider to be less than. I've seen comments saying that these people clog up open forum and mock rape victims for having valid concerns that they will be revictimised with the catalyst project. And I don't know what kind of person looks at a rape victim and laughs, or bemoans the fact that we have the right to speak out against governmental decisions, but to that I would say, if silencing the populace and the subjugation of women of your thing, perhaps Saudi Arabia's ideology may be more to your sensibilities. And I'm unsure how you can sit there and call yourselves progressives and capitulate to the whim of the Catholic Church. You're not stupid. Reject the propaganda, reject the genocidal church, and reject the catalyst project. Stand up for the arboretum and for the people that gave you this power.
Thanks for coming down, Beth. Antoine Valone, and then Brian Lewis, and then Rick Boeck.
Hi, my name is Antoine, and I'm an Autumn Indigenous from Southern Arizona, Indian Reservation, my leave in Spokane, okay? And I just got something here about no sit or lie ordinance, you know, I may cover that. Okay, people, people are homeless today only not because of drugs or alcohol. True, among them are people who are and actually don't care one way or the other. The Democrats win the argument, a free right to cause some more destruction. These are the people you should be concerned and worried about in regards to the safety of the communities, not the unfortunate one who, who to no fault of their own, fall through the cracks in the system. Passing an ordinance like no sit and lie doesn't solve the problem, but actually tightens what the, what little freedom these people have, more ordinances, rules, and regulations to be broken and violated, like inadvertently pushing it onto the police department to deal with it, and at the same time wanting to defund the police department. Make up your mind. Whether you are a Democrat or a Republican, set that aside and pull out your conscience for humanity, that is, if you have one. I am sure and would give the benefit of doubt to everyone who is present in this room tonight. You're smart. People, and working together, I am sure you can figure out a way how to bring the people and the communities together, rather than as Democrats or Republicans. Together, we can solve these problems we presently face today. Thank you.
Thank you, Antoine.
Yeah.
Brian Lewis? Is Brian Lewis here? I don't see Brian Lewis. Rick Boeck. After Rick is Dave Bilson, and then Crystal Burgett.
Sit and lie subject, you know, I was here when they passed the first one, and it was terrible, because they were gonna, they passed five ordinances, one didn't go through, that was a musician's permit. They got rid of that one, it was unconstitutional. But I was there with Center for Justice attorneys, and they didn't like the first sit-in law in the first place, and they, they actually helped the city craft it so that it would be constitutional, and they even said that it still was not constitutional to them, because they mentioned, you know, like people even getting down tying their shoes could be accused of sitting down. And I remember when the first one passed around, they accused me, my friend, of violating the sit and lie law, and we were just trying to tune a guitar. So, I know that you're, you're not going to get rid of it, I know you're gonna, you're gonna just update it again, I already knew that, I can see that very clearly. But the problem that I'm having is, you see, they, when they passed the first one, it said constitutional expressive activity. That has been squashed continually. All these people out here getting sit and lie tickets, actually, a lot of them never went through the courts, but panhandling, people have this really big issue about panhandling. Panhandling is protected speech. Panhandling is in the exception of the constitutional expressive activity. Holding a sign up, let's forget about Christianity, but let's just say, God bless you. What is that? That's religion. So, if somebody says holding a sign up that says God bless, they're exercising a religious freedom. That's constitutional expressive activity. And here's what's happened, they would send them to community court, and that's what I was told constantly, that community court would basically take away their rights to appeal. And so, they basically lost their rights, even though they were cited, they were exercising their constitutional rights. So, you guys go ahead and keep the sit and lie, and there's going to be an education process like there was before, we're going to let people know, don't go to community court, go to the regular court. Don't surrender your rights if you're exercising your constitutional rights. Every one of you up there, including the police department, takes the oath to uphold the Constitution. If somebody's panhandling, it's obvious, the police need to just walk right around them, leave them alone, because they're exercising their constitutional rights, and they should just walk right around them. They have a right to sit on the sidewalk and ask people for money, that's soliciting. And people, you know, like they passed a law a while back ago about soliciting in the, in the roads, they had to include the fire department. The fire department couldn't solicit in the roads either. So, if they're going to stop soliciting, they have to stop all of these corporations, these nonprofit corporations like Downtown Spokane Partnership, they're the biggest panhandler in Spokane. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down. All right, Dave Bilson, and after Dave is Crystal, and then Andrea.
Good evening again. This invoking of the sit and lie ordinance is not only illegal, it's immoral. A lot of these people out on the street wander at night, and the only time they can sleep is during the day, and that's when we get these guys in the black suits bothering them, acting like Nazis. And that's what they're acting like, that's what the people are reminded of. So many times I've talked to people, and you know I feed them, you know I'm out there talking with them, and so many times, and those cops acted like Nazis. It's a common phrase. And look at their uniforms, are black. That's the color of the Gestapo. That's also an unhealthy color to wear, because you're going to get too damn hot. We need to change the police uniforms, so when they go to bug people for sitting in line, which is constitutionally covered, they don't have to deal with someone who appears like a Nazi, being a Nazi to them. Imagine having to be told to move your stuff. I've already talked to you about that. Well, George Carlin said it pretty well, we all need a home, we need a place to put our stuff. Well, you know, if we build 25,000 more units, we might have someplace to put everybody. So, knock off this sit and lie, knock off this other ordinance, I didn't mention it, did I? We need to start thinking more about people and solutions, like, we need to start thinking about warming centers, what about someplace where people will go when it, I don't know, maybe when it gets too smoky? Isn't that the city's self-proclaimed responsibility? So, where the hell is it? It's all focused on the poor homeless people under the, the biaducks, who have no place else to go.
Thanks for coming down, Dave. Crystal, after Crystal is Andrea G., and then Rachel Riley.
Hello, my name is Crystal Yaskoson-Burgett, and I'm a Spokane resident, co-founder at MAC Movement. First, I wanted to remind you, a preventative measure to homelessness is to keep people in their homes. Current resources on all outlets are extremely limited, majority are lacking funding. I know I have personally been looking as I have become behind on rent and am at risk of eviction myself. I'm struggling to sustain with two jobs and three children as the only adult in my home. There's an astronomical amount of people in the same boat trying to access resources and assistance, and living paycheck to paycheck, and one step away from homelessness. To even think about invoking the sit and lie when the current shelters aren't capable of providing adequate resources or shelter beds, we're potentially about to have a major increase in the number of people who are experiencing homelessness as well. Post-pandemic cost of living is not sustainable. No one in poverty or lower class is thriving in life right now. It's one of the most draining feelings to never get caught up. The sit and lie amendment keeps the poor poor, perpetually pushing people around with no compassion. Do you realize how hard it is to make a court hearing when you're poor? Multiple jobs, kids, mental health, lack of transportation, lack of support and representation in court, followed by warrants and arrest, this is nothing more than a prison pipeline, modern-day slavery, where only the local oligarchs and police will gain from the sit and lie. The continued violence against the poor needs to end. I could be sleeping out there myself next month, I don't know. The sit and lie laws, no sit and lie laws, let's work on harm reduction methods and response to poverty versus violence against the poor. I'd also like to point out, a lot of people don't have places to put their things, we talk about that, even people coming here that come see us outside City Hall, when they come in here, they have nowhere to put their things. They're intimidated by the surroundings, they have to leave their entire life upstairs, and that's just something maybe you could think about, not just out there, but also here, so you can diversify who you're hearing from. Thank you.
Thanks, Crystal. Andrea, and then Rachel Riley, and then Justin O'Connell.
Hello, everybody, Andrea Galardo, Spokane and Coraline descendant, and I reside here in Spokane. I am the co-founder of MAC Movement, that's Music, Art, and Creativity Movement, and we've been out here for over five years doing Free Food with a Side of Free Speech. And I just want to say, I'm really proud of the people that come up here and speak, that come and see us, and we give them encouragement to come and speak. The young lady earlier, I'm super proud of her having the courage to tell you her, you know, heartbreaking story, and I just hope that you guys are listening to them. And I know Dave is really comical when he comes up here, but he's got that compassion, because he's been talking about this stuff for so long, and we've been asking for these things for so long, and it's not new, these are not new things, and the struggle is real. But, you know, we're all real people too, and I just hope that we can come up with some solutions. One of the things that I signed up to speak for open forum was to ask to put open forum in the beginning, if we can at least do one sheet in the beginning of the city council meetings, if we can move open forum to the beginning, at least one sheet, because I know people ride the bus, and so people, you're missing out on testimony because they couldn't stay because of how late these meetings go, and they had to get on the bus. So, it's really unfortunate that you're missing out on those testimonies. It's a big part of MAC Movement, is trying to make a comfortable environment for them to come-- It's a big part of MAC Movement is trying to make a comfortable environment for them to come and be able to. And that's just one thing that I would like to see changed, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel Riley, and then after Rachel, Justin O'Connell and Catherine Mullin.
Hello again.
Welcome.
Do I have to say that I live in the city of Spokane again?
No, you already said it.
All right, cool. Okay, this one's a lot shorter. I just wanted to say that it's no secret that we have a problem with homelessness, and not only the city, but our country. And that we do need a solution, but criminalizing homeless isn't it. Criminalizing homelessness won't end it. It's just going to make for other problems, such as the ones that I described that I've dealt with. Sorry, housing for, housing for homeless will help. And you can't even get a job without an address. And how is someone supposed to get themselves stable if they can't even get a job? And de-stigmatizing mental illnesses such as addiction is going to get people help. And getting, getting them real treatment, you know, without the need for religious dogma for those addictions. Getting them treatment for the mental disorders that they've faced due to the trauma that they might have faced in their childhood or in their adult years is going to help. If we want to fix the homelessness problem we have in this city and in our country, we have to get to the root of the real issues. And we can't just bury our head in the sand and ignore these human lives. Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Justin, and after Justin is Catherine Mullins, and then John Alder.
Good evening, council president, council members, Spokane, Justin O'Connell, central planning. So Elon Musk doesn't own a home.
And just, what city do you live in?
Spokane, yeah.
Yeah, great.
Justin O'Connell, central planning, Elon Musk doesn't own a home. He sleeps on spare beds. He's homeless. Okay, so I have an idea, citywide plan to have homeless crash on couches, Operation Homeless, but not Couchless, couches for everyone. I think citizens can allow the homeless to couch surf in their living rooms or master bedrooms. It's kind of up to them at that point. But alternatively, Elon Musk can enter into a partnership with the city, or alternatively, you can enter into a partnership with Elon Musk on Tesla tiny homes, houses. He's designed $15,000 tiny houses. Now, I think that you've heard about Camp Dignity, this forced labor camp for the homeless. That's not a new idea. That's not even my idea. I got some documentation here. Now, I just want to know on Camp Dignity, this is an aside, that this is actually for everyone eventually. It starts with the homeless, but then we do extreme MAGA that goes there, then just MAGA, then Republicans, and then the BLMs end up there at Camp Dignity, and then the social Democrats. We basically only want neoliberalists and neo cons left outside of Camp Dignity, but that's a different story. So Tesla tiny house is powered by green energy. They're $15,000 bucks. Now, I believe the city has like 2,000 homeless people, or maybe that's the county. So if we bought each of them a Tesla tiny house, that would be $30 million. But we need to act now to lock in the interest rates. Also, we need a discount from Elon. So I mean, I'm asking Elon now for a discount. There's also perhaps some trades we can do. He has Neuralink, that's brain chips. What if we did a trade where we get Tesla tiny homes at a steep discount? But Elon gets the brains of the homeless to experiment on them. There's precedent, this isn't my idea, this is, I'm just going through the archives at Central Planning and this stuff pops up. It's actually already standard operating procedure by Big Pharma to medically experiment on the homeless. They basically get the homeless to participate in clinical drug trials. The Harvard Center for Ethics has actually kind of discussed this. The Verge reports how clinical trials turn homeless people into lab rats. It's well documented. So Central Planning recommends council adopt the strategy of our partners at Big Pharma. Elon can experiment on the brains and our homeless get 100% green energy powered tiny homes, which are only $15,000. And so also, you know, Elon has had some concerns. The UN World Food Program on Twitter said that he could solve homelessness, and he asked how. And we did not reply from the WFP Twitter. We are just planning on taking his money and solving the homeless problem ourselves. But with that said, if, we need, we have competition. So Elon's got competition. The World Economic Forum has said that the homeless can, we can do 3D printing homes because they're cheap. Also, they say that the homeless can live in shipping containers. This is all real, by the way. So there you have it, tiny homes for homeless brains and some other alternatives. Thank you.
Thanks for coming down, Justin. Catherine Mullen, Catherine Mullin here. Seen Catherine, John Alder, and then Christine Quinn, and then Sheri Barnett.
I am John Alder from Spokane. So he wants sit in line laws. Well, I want greedy landlord laws. Anytime there's a rent increase that forces a tenant to move, I want that landlord to find and pay for moving them to an affordable apartment. If no apartment is found within six months, that landlord gets kicked out of their home. And if it's never moved into a shelter. Six months more go by, they get kicked out of the shelter in the streets. Now, you may think I have a sick sense of humor saying so, but what about forces somebody to go in their pants or hide in the alley to do their personal business? Can't you let them use the buildings, restrooms? Also, how funny is to be expected to stand from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM approximately shelters are not open? Instead of be able to take a break to sit or take a nap? Now, if this really bothers you, why aren't you building a day shelter for them? And not making it so far to watch you? And by the way, I see a vacant hotel. It used to be there on Third Avenue. Thank you. Also, people worried about trash and the river. Land Council plans on cleaning up the entirety.
Thanks, John, for coming down. Christine Quinn, come on up, and Sheri Barnett, and then William Heelings.
Hi, I'm Christine Quinn from West Hills. If you build it, they will come. 550 people of Camp Hope have spoken and they said no. They said yes to small homes. They wanted a community. I understand that and hope the Camp Hope residents are able to get that through a large parcel of land where they can build a community. Catholic charities have shown a complete disregard to our community. Empire Health wanted to bring pallet homes into our community. And they made a great many promises to Ascenda and its residents. All broken. Empire Health broke all of them and showed a complete disregard to Ascenda's restaurant residents as well as West Hills residents. Our community has come together and said with the resounding, it's a no. I'd like to ask Empire Health and Catholic charities to disinvest themselves of all property owned in West Hills. You're not welcome here. You've shown us you do not have the best interests of our community. Please leave West Hills. Thank you.
Thanks, Christine. Sheri Barnett, after Sheri, William Heelings, and then I believe it's Linda, possibly Brown from Dixon Westside. Good evening, Sheri.
Good evening, President Biggs and all members of the city council. I don't know if you might remember, the last time I testified, I mentioned about the big problem that it is between parties that President Washington foresaw this in his final address. And then I was thinking, as I watched Biden, and I see the constant imprisonment and any attorney that represents Trump and various aspects of that, even speaking of the nine 11, the mayor, oh, what's his name? That was the mayor of New York when this all happened. Rudy Giuliani. Rudy Giuliani was a great mayor, and he's been a patriotic person. But they go and they raid his home and they take his properties. And so I'm thinking that, I've told you many times about this nation is special because it was built on godly principles, the constitution and the Bible. People came here for that. This is what made it great. They were workers. They were abiders in the law. And even, nobody was forced to believe. But everyone had to participate in obid. You don't have to believe in God. If you follow his laws, you will have a blessing. Those laws are orderly. Those laws promote life. And we are on a very dangerous course when we are promoting in our schools, taking children and having them operated on and change their sexuality and put medicine in them without their parents' permission. We're on a dangerous path. And I believe that if we were to follow God's laws, we would still be a great nation. And if we continue in this path that we're going, we are just as perverse as I could ever believe, I could not believe it. So we need a revival. We need to change course. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheri, for coming down. William, come on down. And then, again, Linda, I think it's Brown, but I'm not sure, Dixon Westside. Is that you? Okay, great. Come, come on down. And then after Linda, it's Phil. I don't know if there's a Phil out there. There's no last name. William, welcome.
Well, hello. Basically, what I'm up here to talk about is an incident that happened to myself. And I've actually spoke about this, but I haven't got no callback or any care about my, my, my rights and my freedom. So I was in the park and I got attacked by a street kid that hangs, that comes from crosswalk. I got the police report. So he attacked me, threatened to kill me, pulled out a knife. I pulled out my pepper spray. I'm like twice the size of this guy. And it was all filmed on my, on my friend's phone. The guy went to jail. Will, next day, comes and speaks to Councilman Bingo and his, his assistant, Nicolette. And they offered to help me. And this is in April. I've even talked to Brian Biggs, Johnny Perkins. Because I feel I've been wronged by the Parks Department, city employees, that are able to ban you from going into the park for a whole year. I'm a veteran. I've been around the world. I'm a service connective, and I'm being told that I can't go into the park because I'm attacked by some homeless street kid. And it's a big problem. I've watched a female by where I live get knocked out by, jumped by a group of, I don't know if they're street kids or what. But she laid there for about five minutes unconscious, and then SPD showed up. All she did is said something to them. Every day I walk out my apartment, I feel endangered. I might have to start carrying my gun. I do carry a gun. There's a rumor out that Will carries a gun. Yes, he does. But that's where it's come to. It's, it's pretty sad. And as much as people get up here and talk about this, since I've been coming here, nothing's gotten done. And I, like I've said, I hope, I wish that someone would help me. Because I'd like to go to my park and enjoy pig out in the park and other activities. You know, I do live downtown, but I can't do that because I get attacked by homeless people. And I'm sorry, maybe they weren't homeless, the, the street kids. Maybe that's the wrong word. I call them hoodlums, and I guess that's a bad thing to call people, but look it up. But that's what's happening in our city. So I, I hope somebody would help Will out. Because I don't know what I'm going to do. I mean, Johnny Perkins is not here tonight. I wish he wouldn't have left because I would have talked to him more. But I want to file a complaint. This is ridiculous.
Thanks for coming down. All right, Linda. Yes. And after Linda is Phil, and then James Reinhardt on the phone, and then Jay Sharp.
I'm Linda Peterson, and I've lived here in Spokane all my life. And I've just lately become, I guess, involved more in the city council. But there's a lot of, I, I really, really feel, feel almost bad for you guys because there's so much on your plate. But I'll start out with one thing on this.
Could you pull the microphone down just a little bit?
Oh, sure. Okay. Can you hear me okay? I'm, I'm, my opinion on the moratorium on the West End situation. And thank you, Council, Councilwoman Stratton, and Councilwoman Wilkerson and Kinnear. Because of the fact that you listen to the, the, the people out there. And the moratorium, to me, is really important because of the fact that everybody needs to pull together to find out.
Linda, I just got a, we talked about that earlier, so you can't talk about that in open forum.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry. Okay.
Been a long night.
I know, I know.
Continue on.
But it's kind of like I'm, I'm in every area, the homelessness net going on right now. I've had my kids at Dick's Hamburgers and Frankie Doodles. They're all getting really, really frustrated. Because the, we had, I hired somebody from the House of Charity. So it's not like they're, these people aren't being, not being able to be employed. But I gave him money because of the fact that he didn't have shirts and pants. And he went to Walmart and buy Camp Hope out there. He got attacked by four kids, four people, and his money was stolen. Last week, I had a girl that, and, and my kids are really, really good about the fact of if somebody is in need of food or something like that, they'll give them coffee, toast or whatever. So she fed a homelessness, a homeless guy. And he went out, proceeded to take a rock and bash out her windows. So we see it on both ends. The compassion was always, it's always been there for us. But it's kind of like it's getting really, really old on seeing these people that don't have to take responsibility, I guess. The word is responsibility. You see it on the streets because of the fact that they sit there and they lay out their tents. They, they sit there and eat their foods, but they sit there and they dump everything. And this is, I think that's the reason why a lot of us are sitting there and getting really, really frustrated. Because we are people that are responsible and we sit there and work hard for our money. We pay our taxes, and then we see the homelessness that's going on that don't have to take the responsibility. And I think that's where a lot of us get really, really, really frustrated. The, the compassion was there at the very beginning. It's always been there, basically. And I sat there today watching somebody, and he was a druggie, obviously a druggie, going through, okay. And I just want to make a quote right now. Riverfront Park on the doors says, "Family-friendly environment."
Thank you, Linda.
And it would be nice to see.
All right. No, I know. I've got three people signed up. I don't know if they're all here. But is there a motion to extend just for the three people who are listed? All right, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any pos nay, abstentions? All right, we're going to extend for the three people signed up. Is Phil, is there Phil here? Nope. James Reinhardt is listed on the phone. I don't know if he's still there. If you're there, James, dial three. James, are you there?
Oh, test, one, two, this is James.
Yep, James, you're there. Welcome to city council. Thanks for your patience. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you for extending, and thank you for the, the work that you do. I'm not sure that I'd be cut out for legislator, but I'm glad that there are people that are. James Reinhardt, a member of the West Hills neighborhood, nurse at Sacred Heart, a co-leader at a Spanish-speaking congregation on the North Side. I just wanted to speak a little bit on behalf of, of my family and the neighborhood. I think it's been spoken on before. We are still against the Catholic charities moving in, along with the other, the other low barrier or homeless, homeless transitional homes being brought into our neighborhood. Grateful for the town hall that was held. I think upset, along with others, that we thought it would be a discussion when it was more of just a, we're going to tell you what we're going to do and how it's going to be. Frustrated at the lack of transparency. Grateful for possible litigation that I've heard of that's going through. that's going through. Some minor solutions as zoning, and these huge issues are not my forte, but Julie Garcia, who runs Jules Helping Hands, has said in a recent interview for a journalist, Jonathan Choe, I think is how you say it. She said, "Give me a space, and I will kick them there," in regards to Camp Hope. It seemed like in the interview, she didn't mind where, and neither did the people living in Camp Hope. They don't necessarily want to be in a shelter. We don't want them just on the other side of the Finch Arboretum. I'm not against homelessness. I will bring extra sandwiches from my work by bike and hand them out to people. Though I pack pepper spray, I haven't had to use it yet. We're against, though, some of the trash, the drugs, and the crime that happens to follow some people who do not have homes. So if the neighbors nor the homeless want to call in conversion, what about something further out of town? Not saying that they need to be away from resources, but if we could have a community that would have an urgent care of sorts to help divert people from the emergency department, maybe even a, an area for them to learn skills, practice arts and crafts, to have that local address. I can appreciate that not many people have moved into the tent shelters. So is it the homelessness that is an issue for some of them? Or is it the lifestyle that they might not want to give up? I'm not saying that a RV or a tent is glamorous by any means, but the sense of community that they've built, can we just have that community in a different spot where it's not in the way of commerce, if that's what they want? And also not right next to neighborhoods if there has been an increase in crime rates there.
James, we've come to the end of your time, James. So, thanks again.
Hey, thank you very much.
Thanks for testifying tonight. All right. Mr. Sharp? Come on down, you're the last one.
Just thank you, thank you for having me. I'll be fast. I'm Jay Sharp from Spokane. I'm here for the West Hills community. I'm against a disproportionate amount of homeless services versus in a residential area. West Hills needs to have growth, not stagnation, with adding a shelter for Catholic charities or pallet homes. City council is here to listen to the community and vote with the people and not have policies against what the majority has voiced. Please hear what the West Hills community is saying and help us grow our neighborhood. In the end, your servant leaders and servant leaders need to listen. Thank you.
Thanks, Jay, for coming down. That brings us to the end of our legislative session tonight in open forum. Thanks, everyone. Again, I want to say special thanks to our city employees, Terry Pfister, the clerk, Lauren Beatty, and we've got city council staff here, Sergeant Yamada here, we've got TV5. So thanks, everyone. Thanks of all of you who participated tonight, who were here earlier and who left, and those of you stuck it out to the end. Please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of somebody else. We're adjourned.
Thanks for using WebEx.